Okay.
I'd like to call the village council regular meeting to order June 9th, 2020. So at 6:30 PM and I show we have a full quorum of Councilman Ling, Mayor Pro Tem Vanenburg, and we have Mr. Markalise, Councilman Markalise on video, Zoom X, whatever you want to call it. So we do have a full quorum. Before we do the adoption of the agenda, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to allow Councilmember Markalise to participate remotely via WebEx.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions, changes, subtractions? Call them out. Anyone can go first. Bob, do you have anything?
No, sir.
I've got one thing. The, I know that we're normally going to talk about like our emails that go out for the following month during our work session, but since we just talked about it in our last work session and we don't have anything for July, can I add under new business to talk about like our email blurbs that are going to go out, like our little snippets? Can I add that under new business?
Okay, so that would be under open public forum?
Yeah.
Oh, no, that's Jamie. That's, I'm sorry, this, do we have open topics? You want to put that before open topics?
Yeah, yeah, number six under new business.
What is it?
Discussion and consideration of communication blurbs?
Yes, that's perfect. Perfect.
Okay. Anything else?
Mayor, I have one application that came in for a planning board and website that came in after the agenda packet went out.
Okay.
Do you want to add that as part of your discussion when you appoint?
Do you have those applications?
I do have copies for everyone and I forward it.
If I'm not mistaken, it should be similar application because isn't that someone that was applying for?
Yes, yes, that applied for the council position. He agreed to apply for a planning board vacancy.
But I think that's fine if we talk about it, even though we didn't have it, I think that's fine.
Yeah. Bob, do you have that particular thing? We can share it with you and you may have to go look for it, but.
No, I sent it to him by email, but he should have electronic version of it.
Okay.
Okay, all right, I'll check, I'll check my email.
All right, so we essentially have then three applicants and one for the.
You have two applicants and they are all ready to appoint to planning board position, but you have one more, so there's three applicants.
All right, anything else? I have one recommendation. As I look through unfinished business, we are discussion and consideration or consider appointment to planning board for vacant seat, I believe by an ex, someone who resigned recently, so we're filling one spot there. But I also see as we look down that we are potentially going to be discussing removal. So I'd like to move removal up and do it all at the same time if we'll take a vote on that. I don't know what that decision will be, but after that decision, can we do that? Chaplin? Even though it's not, because basically it's a discussion of consideration of planning board member removal, number two. And the fact that we're going to be appointing someone, if we're going to be appointing, we might as well appoint at the same time if there is a removal.
Well, my piece in there that I added to is really to have a discussion around removal because of recent events, not to actually remove.
Okay.
Have that discussion of removal, what the process is, let's make sure that we're following the appropriate process, let's make sure that there is, that we allow for whoever this person might be, be allowed the proper process as well. So it was just more of the discussion.
Informational, so I. Okay, okay, I thought action should be taken, my mistake on that, so, okay. All right, we'll leave it as it is now. Okay. I'm fine with that. Do you have anything else on that you want to change? Okay, so I'll need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Sir, moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have the public legions.
Public legions, united States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, now finally, we have next up on the agenda, get him involved right away, appointment and installation of new councilmember Andy Wardman. We have Chairman Larry Simpson from Union County Board of Commissioners.
Jerry.
Huh? Jerry. It says Larry and I just asked, I said, isn't it Jerry? I thought it was Jerry.
I was talking about this, Larry, sorry Jerry.
I'm called a lot worse.
Sure you are. I'm sure you are. I had sworn it was Jerry and maybe they got it wrong, but that, okay.
Sorry.
That's okay, we're good. All right, so we will have Chairman Jerry Simpson come up and do we have the, do you have everything as far as the Bible and everything?
Yes.
Before we take this adventure, I just want to say what a pleasure it is to be in the village of Marvin. And we talked about earlier how, I think it's about the third time maybe since I've been elected that I've been here under various capacities, it's always a pleasure. We appreciate all that you do in service to not only your community, but the county as a whole. We continue to be, we're excited, we're fixing to pass a budget, a budget with no tax increase and a budget that we're excited has been relatively stable with regard to property tax. We're all going to take a hit on the sales tax, we understand that, but it looks like we're rebounding and so we're excited about the future. A lot of good things going on, so we appreciate your contributions to that. And anytime that we can help you be a part of success in Marvin, we want to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, I will ask Mr. Wardman, if you will, to put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand and repeat after me, I'll try to make this real simple. So you and I, either one of you. I, Andy Wardman, do solemnly and sincerely swear.
I, Andy Wardman, do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities.
Which are or may be established by the government thereof.
Are or may be established by the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend the Constitution.
Maintain and defend the Constitution.
And the laws of said state.
And the laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As councilmember for the village of Marvin, so help me God.
As.
Councilman for the village of Marvin, so help me God. Congratulations.
You got it official, right? Look at that.
Probably need to sign this.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Andrew.
Thank you. You know, that is probably the most challenging oath to read that I've ever had. I mean, I've had to do it a number of times and I'm like, oh, where do I break this up?
I've heard some long sentences and the person looks at it.
You're going to have to go back and let's make this a little work.
GR, GR, the clerk of court, I always get him to do mine because he'll just read the whole thing and say, you will, honey? I will. He's going to have to repeat it anyway.
Barbie, do you need this?
Yes. Yes. I'll have to find it.
Again, I appreciate it, I won't hold you up. And could you send me that?
Yes.
Video or a couple of pictures or something?
I will do that and if you want, do you have a cell number I can sell it to?
Sure, sure. 704.
Oh, we're putting it out there.
302.
Whisper.
2940. We have a stakeholders meeting for, as the other, you folks don't have to worry about it because you're in a fire tax district, I believe, but we're fixing to make some significant changes in the rural area in terms of fire funding. We're going to all fire districts as opposed to the fire theater.
Okay.
This has been going on ever since 2011, so this is how long it's taken to get where we are. But we had a stakeholders meeting and there was probably 25 people in the room and it was taped like we tape all our meetings live, you know, and I said, I'll give y'all my cell phone number. I re-announced, somebody said, you guys know you just gave it to the whole world. That's okay.
As long as you answer right.
You got it, so come on in, plug in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, congratulations, Andrew. Next up, we have public comment period. Just a quick reminder, all citizens are welcome to speak during the public comment period. Sign in if you wish to address the village council, submit a written copy for your comments to the clerk to be properly recorded. Each speaker group asks to limit comments to three minutes. We can request that one person speak on behalf of a large crowd if that's what happens. Although, village council is interested in hearing your concerns, speakers should not expect council actions or deliberation on subject matter. So during the public comment second, I think I'm going to get used to saying that because I think I always forget and people think it's a dialogue time, so we'll have time for that at another venue. But with that, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we have someone that signed up. She, they are not here, but they would like for their statement to be read for the record. So if you want to read it or if you would prefer that I read it, either way.
If you have it there, I think I saw it, but I am not have it. Is this from Deborah?
Deborah Berry.
Okay, here we go.
All right, I'm about to time you.
Okay, this is Deborah Berry from 3310 Waxon Marvin Road in Marvin. She states, I would like to go on record as being strongly opposed to the segment of the proposed Waxon Marvin Greenway south of Bonds Grove Road, intersecting ending, intersection ending at the village of Marvin boundary. I request it to be removed from the PR and G master plan, simply ending a bit sooner at Bonds Grove Road. My opposition is due to two main concerns. First, seven of the 10 properties on the west side of Waxon Marvin are horse farms such as depicted on the Marvin website. I personally own 600 feet of that frontage. Installing an asphalt bike path next to these pastures will ruin the ambience of one of the last countryside areas of Marvin. In the larger picture of the plan, it is not necessary. Trying to pet a horse over the fence will be irresistible by children and some adults. Horses do not know the difference between a carrot and a finger. Horses have been sickened and died by good intending people feeding them inappropriate items. The liability will be large and one eye and other property owners do not want to take on. I and the horse neighbors I have spoken with do not believe this small segment of the greenway is worth these risks. My second concern and perhaps the most important for the wider Marvin population is pedestrian safety. The PR and G committee is proposing a greenway path for this section of Waxon Marvin, apparently did not take adjacent road conditions into consideration. I ask that the council do. There are two large and somewhat blind curves in the road north and south of my property. They have been the reason for 10 car accidents in the past 10 years. Of the 10 accidents, six of them have been in the last two years. The frequency has increased, I assume along with the amount of traffic which speeds. The latest crash was just this past May. The BMW went off the curb onto my median, skimmed my fence, hit a bump, went into the air, landed on its, in the shoulder and burst into flames, right where the path would be. All of the accidents have resulted in the cars traveling off the road through my fence and the other property owners' fences along this stretch. These numbers do not even include the cars that have crashed through the horse pasture fence at the corner of Bonds Grove and Waxon Marvin. In conclusion, I ask that this small segment be removed as proposed for the larger Waxon Marvin Greenway. And Barbie, you have that for the.
I do have it, yes.
Okay.
That's your call.
Thank you, Deborah, for your sending that in to us. Do we have anyone else?
No, sir.
All right. We will move on to the next agenda, reports and updates. First up, we have, oh, I'm sorry.
The presentation.
PR and G master, I almost skipped right over. Number six, PR and G master plan presentation. And that's Tim Johnson.
Tim worked really hard on it.
Yeah, sorry about that. Tim Johnson.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
There you are, yep.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and share my content and my screen here in a second. Brooke, I appreciate you folks taking the time to work and speak to you on. This has been a neat project. It's been a pleasure working with Redhead and some of your other village staff as well as your PR and G committee. They were very engaged in the process, which is always nice. Makes my job a lot easier when we have that. Basically, I'm just going to kind of hit some high points of the plan in this presentation. I think Redhead walked y'all through it. And then that leaves plenty of time for any questions you might have afterwards. So again, thank you for your time tonight and I'm going to see if this works. Let me share. Okay. Hopefully y'all are seeing that title of my presentation now. My name is Tim Johnson. I'm the senior planner at Destination by Design, a planning engineering communications firm based out of Bay, North Carolina, although for the last two or three months, we're based out of all sorts of different places in western North Carolina. Most of us are working on which has been needless. It's always good to be back in Bay. Basically, what I'm going to cover tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the scope of work that we're charged with, best of plan vision, as well as the community survey results for your 2019 survey. We looked at four different trail types that we're proposing for your greenway system and then talk about recommendations and implementation. So as far as the scope of work goes, it wasn't creating a plan out of scratch, as most of you probably know. We were asked to do text and map updates. And so we did, we created an intermediate section of the plan, we created opportunities and constraints maps, which basically point out various opportunities and challenges to greenway development. And then we updated your proposed greenway network map as well. We checked your trails and came up with a trail classification, destination, and also came up with four different trail types. We also looked at co-rotating different segments. And we did that by looking at the current trail status, connections to existing trails and connections to certain destinations. And then we came up with the estimate of all of the cost for each segment as well. So the plan vision, this came from your other plan, it might have been fleet to wheel here, not wheeling. But basically, the plan vision says that the village of Marvin will, in the near term, create a development of an interconnected greenway network of walking, running and biking trails to preserve the rural character of the area, conserve natural habitats, create a sense of community and provide recreational opportunities for residents of the village of Marvin. So again, this should be very similar to what was in your previous plan. We also incorporated the results from your 2019 survey. We focused solely on to questions that pertain to greenways and parks. I'm not going to go through and read the penalties, but there's good support there under the page for greenways and parks, which I don't think is a surprise for me. And these survey results are just a way that, you know, folks that read the plan can see how there was widespread public support, the greenways and parks within the village. We decided on four different trail types. The first trail type was a DOT side path. These are trails that are typically within the DOT right of way, next to the roadside. We recommend a five foot wide buffer between the road and the path. Typically, you're looking at a concrete greenway here. So basically, an eight to 12 foot wide sidewalk that is, you know, very close to the road. These are your paths that are going to be probably most heavily used, that you're going to see the most traffic, the most greenway traffic on, and so that's the reason for the wide width and the concrete. The second trail type was a typical greenway. So these are basically greenways that go over land, maybe to rough areas that get a lot of use. We were looking at an eight to 12 foot wide asphalt greenway in this case. You know, when most people think about the word greenway, this is typically what comes to mind. So you would put these in areas that have highly moderate traffic, greenway traffic, and that's the reason for the asphalt. The third trail type was crushed stone. This is a greenway type that you would find in areas that are probably moderately traveled, not necessarily close to a road, but overland. And we're looking at a six to eight foot wide crushed stone path for this trail type. And then the final trail type was a natural surface trail, which is basically dirt. You know, some folks, depending on the environment the trails in, you might gravel this natural surface trail. The difference though in this and the crushed stone is that this one's narrower, so we're looking at eight, at our four to eight foot width. And these are the trails that you find in areas that probably have lighter use than the rest of your system. And they might be in areas of streams and areas where you're looking at less impact with the trail. So when we look at your existing trail system maps, we're basically applying two classifications or designations. We have the spine trail, which is your primary circulation route, it's going to connect major destinations within the village. And then connector trail, which basically range out of the spine trail, and then it's going to connect the spine with other key assets within the village. If you look, the spine length was 7.27 miles, the net total was about 27.59 miles, so you've got roughly 35 miles of greenway within this system. Approximately 4.13 miles exist are already on the ground in some form or fashion. The estimated cost to complete the entire system, and we'll get into more details about this in a minute, is approximately 20.5 million. So this is a map of the overall greenway system as well as a list of each trail segment. I'll give you an alternate on various parts of the map so you get a closer look. The, I guess the thing I want to point out is the spine, you've got two segments that make up the spine, one of those being the Marvin Loop and then the other being the Waxon Marvin Greenway, which goes from the loop south to the village limits. So two sections that are considered spine and you have 20 segments that are considered connector trails. So if we take a look at the northern half of the village there, I'll zoom in on it. Again, most of these, most of these paths or greenways were already within your greenway plan. You might see some changes in the way that these segmented them, but you shouldn't see a whole lot of new routes on this map. We simply took a look at what you had and kind of resegmented them, it's not what we were seeing there. So again, the focus of this northern section is that Marvin Loop. And then you'll notice you have several connectors that go north, south, east and west, all directions. Looking at the southern part of the village, again, you shouldn't be seeing any new routes here. Most of them are consistent with what you had in your other plan, unless there are easements or so on that you might have acquired since the other plan was done and forced those are added. But again, this is, shows the spine, Waxon Marvin Greenway that continues north to south and then numerous connectors that form a lot of loops off of the spine as well as the connectors. The other thing I'll mention is you'll notice that a fair bit of these trails are outside of your village limits, whereas most of the ones in the northern section are within the village limits. So of course, means you're going to have to work with additional partners to make those routes happen. So as far as implementation goes, we did a sign of priority in our trip segment and we basically stuck with a short, mid and long-term priority system. So the short-term priority would be targeted to be completed in zero to five years, midterm would be five to 10, and then long-term would be 10 plus years. That priority was determined by trail status. So if you have trails that are programmed, that means the easement is already secured, then that would bump it up in priority because that easement was secure versus if it was just proposed. If it connected to trails that already existed, like the Marvin Loop, then that would also sort of elevate the priority of that segment of the trail. Or connected to certain destinations, schools, the village square, that thing, then that would also affect your priority. So you'll notice as far as the priorities go, it's pretty much worked out equally. We didn't do that intentionally, it worked out that way based on looking at the various things I just discussed. So short-term, you're looking at around 10 and a half miles, midterm priority, literally nine miles, and then long-term again around two miles. And you can see the breakdown of the probable cost there. I've also got a table there at the bottom left that talks or explains the trail status. So you've got four miles of trail on the ground right now that exist, approximately four miles of easements that you have secured, but you know, the trail hasn't been built yet. And then approximately 26 miles of pedestrian trail broken. As far as our costs, one thing I want to stress with these costs is that, you know, this is a 15, 80, 20 year plan. And so the last thing we wanted to do is give you a plan that, you know, you build a segment of freeway and the first segment that you put out with it comes in way over cost. So these costs are projected to account for the increased cost in the future over the next 15 to 20 years, as well as for the varied widths. So if you think about the different trail types, you know, we had widths of eight to 12 feet, in some cases, the natural surface was four to eight feet. And obviously, the wider you build it, the more expensive it's going to be, so that's the reason for these costs. But just to break it down, the DOT side path trail type, we looked at $200 on your foot, the greenway, again, $200 on your foot, the crushed stone path, $80 on your foot, and natural surface trail, $50. So it's a tricky situation when you're trying to come up with probable costs. You don't want it to be low, so low that those costs are wrong when your client goes out to build these greenways, but you don't want it to be so high either that, you know, it deters implementation. So again, these are projected, this is a 15 to 20 year plan and that's sort of what we went on with these costs. And I think, yeah, that is all I have as far as the presentation goes. If you want to talk about specific greenway sections or segments or co-organization, I can do that. Got the plan open in another window and I can share that screen if I need to. But at this point, any questions you might have?
Tim, I have a question. I've got the plan in front of me and I see there where you're looking at probable costs. I'm at page 39 and I'm looking at the implementation, but I see the priority, but what page is that on where it says probable cost?
Okay, so if you go to the next, to the next page, that would be page.
Forty?
Forty. There's a project co-organization matrix.
Yes.
What we've done with these matrices is we've taken each trail and broken it up into what we feel like are logical implementation segments. That might be based on road crossings, it might be based on trail type, a number of different things.
Okay.
That's where you can find the probable cost for each, each segment, as well as a total cost of the entire trail section.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tim, I don't know, somebody's, we got a little bit of background if someone wants to mute. This is the mayor here. What determines the trail types we put in? Is it the traffic we expect, the topography that we're dealing with, cost, or kind of a combo of all that? Because I can see where it makes sense in some areas that, you know, we just do simple dirt, but you know, I mean, I look at everything, every time we put a shovel or something, what's it going to cost and what is more cost effective in your opinion to maintain? Is there a certain type of, of the four choices we have? And what is more cost effective in your opinion to maintain? Uh, is there a certain type of, of the four choices we have? Is there a certain type you would steer us to because of long-term costs of maintaining? Or is this going to be driven by cost, budget and topography or traffic? I mean, like, if it's a thorough road, I'm not sure you're going to get a lot of bike riders.
Right, um, well typically, so these trail types were determined by a couple of different factors. Um, one was by your, by your PRG committee. Okay, so in my initial meeting I had with the PRG committee, we looked at each trail segment and we discussed appropriate trail type. Um, so that was sort of the first step is what they felt like was appropriate. Um, obviously, if I didn't feel like that was the appropriate trail type, I would say something. But in most cases, I was in agreement with exactly what they were saying. Um, typically, you know, my answer to you would be that your, your trail type is going to be based on use and expected use. So, you know, a DOT side path, which is a concrete sidewalk, a very wide concrete sidewalk. You know, you're going to expect, in most cases, you're going to expect heavy use on those, those, those trails. Um, because they, they are out in the open, people see them, they're visible, you know, people know they're there. So you're going to see heavy use in those, and that's the reason for the, the greater width, as well as the, um, as well as the material type. Well, once you get off the road and you get more in the woods or in an overland route, we go with the, we, we keep that, that width, that eight to 12 foot, that eight to 12 foot width, but we go with, with asphalt, which isn't going to, in most cases, even though we have the same price assigned, it's not going to be as expensive. And on these, again, you're going to expect moderately heavy use on, on these routes, just, you know, based on where they're located primarily. Once you get away from the roads, away from those major thoroughfares and the, the trails that people see that are visible, that, you know, when they're visible, they're more aware of them, that's when we go with these other two trail types. So the crushed stone, again, that's, that's a trail type that you're probably expecting moderate use on. Um, but it's not your road, it's not visible to the public, so it's not necessarily, your awareness of it isn't there. It's only those trails that are, you know, kind of neighborhoods away from the road or a rocky area, it's creek corridor. Um, and it's a little bit more environmentally sensitive to that environment and that setting. Um, and so that's why you're looking at a crushed stone path, simply because, again, it's, you're expecting moderate use on those. And then with the natural service trail, those are going to be the areas that you're probably expecting lower use, as well as areas that you won't have less environmental impact on. Um, so these are areas, again, they're creeks, overland, through the woods. Um, those type of areas, again, are not real visible to folks. So the awareness might not be quite as, as high as with your other first two trail types. But you're probably going to expect lower, lower like the use on these trails. So, you know, in, in summary, your trail type was basically determined by what we expected the use to be.
And obviously, that can change. Um, my other question, you know, obviously, we, we saw rough numbers before, $20 million. And, and what, what struck me is the fifteen to twenty year plan, how they came up with that. And I'm thinking, to be realistic, if we just took the first one, Marvin Loop that you have at 2.2 million, I will tell you right now, that'll take over 10 years based on our budget. So I, I don't know why, why we're proposing a fifteen to twenty year land, but unless there's some sort of bond or something that we were able to do this, just doing that one loop at 2.2 million, given our existing budget and how much we've kind of steered in that direction, um, that's, I, to me, not realistic, um, on that. What are your thoughts?
Well, I mean, there's always, there's grant funding that can be, uh, you know, that you can go after for these, some of these projects. There's money coming through your NPO, um, that could help with some of these projects. Um, and then, yeah, it just depends on, you know, what the village, if they want to appropriate, appropriate any money to these projects. Um, you know, we can, we can link in that priority, that, that low, mid and high-term priority area out. You know, you would feel comfortable with that. Um, you know, but then when you start getting the fifteen and twenty years, you really need a new plan because so much changes in that time period. Um, so again, this is based on a snapshot in time right now. And it's, you know, it just depends on how, what sort of priority, greenways and parks are, and how much the village wants to, to give to those projects, and how much the public wants them. Um, and how much, you know, work village staff, you want village staff to do to go after this grant funding and other funding sources to make it happen.
Hey, Tim, um, so with kind of that being said, are there, do you know of examples of other communities, towns, um, that have faced this similar budget piece? As well as kind of the, you know, trying to get a greenway in or the trails and the, the trail system in? And how they went about doing it? Is there some kind of, is there some kind of, without recreating the wheels, or some kind of blueprint for us that we can follow? Or there's examples of other communities that have done this that you or someone else could, could refer to us?
There, there are other communities and other projects that, that I know about, and also ones that we've worked with that have done this, that, yeah, I can definitely, you know, give you all contacts and examples there. Um, you know, the way I would approach this, if, if I was in your position, you know, based on the survey results, as you can see the group survey, and see where the public, see where the residents are with this. Is this a priority for the residents? Um, if it is, then there, you know, I would recommend that there does need to be a certain amount in your budget every cycle for greenway and park development, whatever that number is. Um, the other thing, and, and what you want to do is you want to take that money. You want to take the village money and leverage it with grants. So there's some grants listed within the document. And different grants, obviously, focus on different, different things. So what you need to do is go through this plan, look at these trail segments and figure out, okay, this trail segment is located in the creek corridor, so therefore, we should go after North Carolina Water Resources for it. Um, or this trail segment is located along the road, so we should, we should look at recreational trails program thing. And figure out which grant source those match the best. And then use the village money to match those grants. So for instance, water resources, you can get $200,000, but you have to match it with $200,000. Um, so again, you've got to focus on certain segments, the ones that fit the grant sources the best. And then try to leverage your money with those, as well as work with your NPO to get money from them to help, help implement these. Um, you know, one, one example of a successful greenway is here, Ben's, the Mill Fork Greenway. Um, if you Google that, you'll find the link to the village conservancy. Um, that's a great story. One of the things they did was they had a, a local funding campaign where various, you know, organizations within the county, within the towns, um, would match money. Um, you know, they had restaurants or that kind of stuff. Then they would have a night where the restaurant would create X amount of people eating here, um, which I know isn't as easy for y'all there in the village, but, um, so that kind of thing. Capital campaigns, asking residents to give money to fund these, these, these greenways. That's another way you can do it. And I think the most important thing that, that you need to remember is that you've got to take this money, whether it's village appropriated money or residents who have given money, you have to leverage it with grants. That's the key. Because then you can take your $100,000 and you can turn it into $200,000 and so on. Um, but you have to have the capacity or be willing to, to allow, allow staff to focus on these, on, on this, on this plan and get it implemented, because it takes time and it takes, you know, it takes a lot of effort. Um, so that's sort of the key there.
And, and Tim, not familiar with the grant program, is, is that, based on your experience, kind of year round? Or is that something that we budget for at the, in June, July? It's in the budget, but then the grants only a certain time of year? Are they pretty much around the year we have potential access to it?
So they're, they usually have one to two grant cycles a year being on the grant source. Um, and most of those deadlines have already passed. They're typically in the spring of the year, which the reason I'm telling you that is because that gives y'all six months to sort of kind of look at those, research them and focus on what you decide you want to do. Um, the way, and a lot of those grants are spread out over a number of years. So for instance, the recreational trails program grant, which this year, the limit is up at $200,000. You have three years to spend that. Okay, so what that means is you can take three separate budget cycles to come up with a match money for that grant. So that grant, I think, requires a 25% match. So that one and all has to be met within one budget cycle, or have to be met over three budgets. Um, so again, that's, you know, the recommendation I would make is look at that implementation matrix, see what those short-term priorities are, see what the amounts are, and then look at your grant sources and match those to those priorities, and that gives you an idea of how you can proceed.
Tim, do you know if, um, any tiger grants have been awarded for greenways?
Um, gosh. I'm not sure that there have been any awarded within North Carolina. Um, that is a, a source that you could go after, but it is very involved. Um, you know, you definitely have, have to have somebody on that, you know, working solely on that to try to make that happen. But I'm, right off the top of my head, I'm not familiar with, with greenways that have been funded with tiger grants within North Carolina.
And if we're doing a three-year plan like that, where it's three years, does the process not get started until it's fully funded? Or can it be started and just kind of a work along in the next year? And another $100,000 or $50,000 goes towards a building where you never exceed what's, what's been appropriated?
Right, so, so, yeah, so what you would do in that case, I mean, the council would have to, uh, you know, we basically have to, to pass a resolution that says they will meet the match within that three-year time period. Um, so that commitment would be there, but no, they will, it's a reimbursement grant. Okay, so you have to spend the money and then you would get reimbursed for the money. And what they'll do is they'll only reimburse you up to a certain amount because of the match that's required. Um, so the, the only thing that, you know, you've got to make sure of where to get that full funding is to make sure that your permitting is all in hand. And once that's done, and there's a resolution of some sort that says you're willing to commit that match money, then you're, you're going to be good for those grants.
So we get the grant first, then we do the resolution, or do we have the resolution first and get the grant?
The resolution will be part of the grant application.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're talking about part S. Is he talking about part S?
Yeah, and then overall, just looking at the whole, as I read it today, um, the master plan, was it modeled after anything? You mentioned something where we basically tweaked our old one, or was it modeled after a certain town in your opinion? Or is it, looking at this whole thing, it was like, so much information there, where to get started and stuff? But, um, and it was very nicely done. I, I have, obviously, tons of questions, but I, I just, was it modeled after a particular place? Um, our, our land use plan, is it, we always like to be known as special.
Um, as far as the, I wouldn't necessarily say it was modeled. Now, we use the same sort of system that we used in Stallings. Um, and by system, I mean, we use the spine and connector system. So if you look at our issue publications page and look at the Stallings plan, um, you'll see that similarity. But that's really the only similarity is the spine and the connectors. Um, simply because when we looked at your overall plan, we felt like that's what worked best, um, with your community. So the, the plan itself was kind of modeled in that direction. But I mean, no, I mean, every community's different. Um, you know, communities can be similar, but, but they're not identical. And so that's something that makes our work real interesting is that, you know, you've got to figure out what those, what those opportunities are in each community and take advantage of them.
But, I mean, this is basically an update refresh of what we had X number of years ago.
That's correct. And kind of into this project model, and this wasn't the goal that was voiced to me by your staff, but it's the goal I had after looking through your previous plan, was to try to make it a bit more concise and a bit more user-friendly. Um, and I, I feel like we were successful at doing that. I only would give all to you that that was sort of going into this process and looking at that whole plan. And that was, was what I was shooting for, was a more concise and user-friendly plan that you could take and implement.
And, and in your experience, as I was reading and talking about school districts, one thing that popped up to me right away was over at the elementary school where I think a lot of local funding sources, if I'm not correct, um, kind of funded that whole thing. And then right away, the county education system went and gobbled it up and they don't allow us to use it. However, it was a lot of individuals, developers and stuff. But do you, do you see, in your experience, schools opening up fields like that track field? That maybe they work with towns and, and utilize that as part of their park and, and pathway? Because I know right now, they don't allow us to even, you know, we, we can't do anything with it as far as the public goes. It is Union County, and you find that the school systems tend to work with you? Or us, or as a village?
That, I mean, that really, gosh, that depends on the school system. I mean, I, I live in Burke County near Morganton, and the schools there are fenced off and you can't go there. Um, you know, when they're, well, when they're open air flights for that matter, you don't have to get there. But I've also worked in Rockingham County, just north of Greensboro. And basically, when school's not in session, those schools and playgrounds and tracks are neighborhood gathering places. Um, you know, so that really depends on the community. And I think the thing that you have to do is you have to stress how it benefits both the community and the school. Um, and, and try to, it's, it's interesting, you have to find the right people to work with. Um, you know, we do this, all the time, we work with DOT or the railroad or school systems. And lots of times, it's just finding that right person to work with, who's willing to, to hear you out and listen to the benefits. And, um, and, you know, targeting that person and working with them. So again, it's hard to say if they would allow that, but, you know, you can point out the benefits, that's sort of the approach to data.
Sam, one thing that you, I think you said that there was, maybe it was the priority list, the short term, because we had some easements already. Did you say that?
Yes.
Did we notate that anywhere in the, in like the prioritization matrix?
So in the matrix, um, let's see, let me, it's got a page.
Am I just missing it?
I thought I saw a priority, but that was...
Yeah, if you look in the matrix itself, there is a, I think we call it trail status. And it's either existing, programmed or proposed.
Okay.
And that means that the easement is secure.
Tim, I, sorry to interrupt, but, uh, so the screen you're showing us, you have to tell WebEx to share that screen also. We're just seeing a blank square. Like the, I think you have a master plan up there. We, we don't see it.
All right. Hold on one second, let me see if I can...
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Okay, and I, and I didn't hear what you said. You said the, which one is one that we have easements on?
Yeah, let me rotate this so it's a little easier to read. So on these, these prioritization matrices, if you look at trail status, it says existing, programmed and proposed. If the trail status is programmed, that means the easement is secure. Um, I went through the plan prior to the meeting, and every segment where the trail status is programmed is a short-term priority, except for, I think, two, who are, are midterm. But that's where that information is presented.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, the easement, when, when we say programmed, the easement either can be secured or like promised. Because I think in the case of Innisbrook, specifically, we know we're going to have a sidewalk there, but we haven't gotten the easement yet. But when the county sewer project happens and is done, we'll have the easement then. So in either case, programmed versus proposed is a case of we either have the easement or we'll get it. But proposed is something we have to start from scratch with getting easement.
Can we notate the ones that we actually have easements on?
Yeah, that's something I have to do research on each segment, but we should do that.
I mean, because if we have it, then it's like, okay, let's put a star... I mean, because if we have it, then it's like, okay, let's put a star there. We know that we have it. We don't have to worry about that one. And then ones that we know, you know, that we need to start working on, or ones that have been promised, I would say, let's work, you know, let's start trying to secure these.
Is that the only one that you know of that isn't secure right now, that the only segment?
I have to look at each one that says programmed. There's another, I think another program segment is the NC-16, and those easements aren't, they haven't gotten the right way for that yet. Either they're going to be out in two years, but they will. So that's another one that we will get them through NC DOT, so we don't have to pay for them, but we don't have them right now.
But I would also notate that, that NC DOT will secure those easements. Like, I think we just, we need like another, you know, just kind of.
Designation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like ones that we have, ones that we've promised, ones that DOT is going to secure for us. And then that way, that'll just help with our prioritization.
And kind of the other thing, I think right away about like roads, when we did roads, then it became, how do we keep council out of it from making, it's almost better if it's recommended by planning board or some sort of group that.
Parkway Greenway?
Yeah, but they're also, they live here too and stuff.
So it's like.
I know. It's, I don't know if there's any way to get around it, but it became an issue of whose roads. We just want to make sure we're not, you know, oh, it's, they're doing that because so-and-so lives there and stuff like that. But I know this looks like it's well thought out, organized, and, you know, we're just kind of checking things off as we get the money, I guess.
Well, the priorities that are in this plan reflect PRG's priorities as well, as what was discussed and recommended to council back in the day. So I'm aligned with everything that PRG's working on.
Any other questions from council?
No, I think, Tim, you did a very nice job. It was very concise. Whatever your goal was, you accomplished it. You made it easy for us.
Great, thank you.
Okay. There are no other questions. Thank you for your time today for this presentation. Very helpful and informative. And I think we're going to be talking about this a little bit later, right?
Yeah.
In the meeting?
Yeah. He's the first one after reports and consent. So do you want him to say for that, or do you think you have to come with it?
I mean.
Wait, where is it?
If the first.
It comes again. That's why I was surprised. I thought this was, this part was, it is talked about again.
It's the part where you.
Right, unfinished business discussion, consideration.
It shouldn't be much longer to.
Right. Yeah, I don't think it needs to, does anyone think it needs to stop? I think we probably can get to consensus. So based on the questions I have and what he's, what I've learned from it, if there's something we can learn, obviously we can get back to him. I don't know.
Yeah.
Decision will be made tonight anyways, but.
Well, you're actually consideration of approval for tonight. Is that correct, Brad?
You could, you could adopt it tonight.
We could.
You could.
Okay. So if things go well, then it could happen. But if we have some more questions and concerns, then we'll.
You just want to have him hang tight. I mean, it's only going to take five minutes to go through his reports.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, go ahead and ask him.
Tim, when you're available.
Can you say?
Sure, yeah. I'm, 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 I thought I might.
Everybody seems to have time on their hands right now. Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. Moving on, we'll move on to the next topic, which is administrators' reports, reports and updates. That's Christina.
It is, Mr. Mayor. So the first thing I had on the agenda is the first try on capital model meeting, which I've tentatively scheduled for June 16th at 10 o'clock. Just wanted to make sure council was okay with that date and that time. And if so, we will direct Barbie to put out the special meeting notice for that accordingly.
That's.
June 16th.
That's next Tuesday.
I'm fine.
I, yeah, I'm out of time. I won't be able to. I can maybe call in.
And we can do remote. He's, the vendor is probably going to remote in anyways. It's going to be done through WebEx.
Okay. So next Tuesday, and that's at 10:00 AM?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I will. That's the thing, okay?
So if you're out of town.
Yes, I'll be.
Mayor for Tim Van den Berg, are you in town too? Okay. So when are you leaving? Because I'll need to get you to sign the notice.
Oh, I'll.
Or you want me to?
I can, I can either do it electronically or.
Yes, we can do it that way too.
Yeah. But I'll make sure we can get that. It's just, can we have the meeting and will we have everybody here? And it's first try and capital model meeting.
It's a financial model.
Okay. So how long is that going to be?
I'd say maybe an hour.
Okay.
Depending on the questions that you guys have.
Until 11:00. Okay. So two hours. And everyone's good for that?
I see you're already picking up on it.
Yeah.
That's good.
Okay. So Barbie can prepare that notice? And the second thing I had on the agenda is the update on the personnel for the park maintenance supervisor. At the last meeting, I had asked for authorization to hire John Lucas for the recently advertised park maintenance supervisor at a rate of $27,500 per year at 30 hours a week. However, our personnel policy defines a full-time employee as one that has 37 and a half hours. As you see, I passed out a copy of our personnel policy. However, that does contradict with the ACA, the Affordable Care Act, as well as the local government retirement definition of when we have to pay for retirement benefits. I have passed out the full-time hours as designated by the IRS publication that notes it is 30 hours a week. So therefore, the request of 30 hours a week is fully in line with federal guidelines that we have to issue insurance for, at least often insurance to individuals that work 30 hours. In addition to that, local government says that anyone that works 1,000 hours in a year is, we have to legally pay for their retirement pension. So regardless of what our personnel policy says, we do, still are legally bound by that. So I passed out a suggested motion. I'm asking for you guys to make a motion to authorize his hire and define him as a full-time employee.
Do, do we need to also make a motion to update our personnel policy?
We are, we are in the process of doing that.
So no?
As soon as.
You already know there's some issues there. We're hanging on. I think if you do this on a case-by-case.
Okay. All right. Do you have any questions?
No.
So I'd like to make a motion to authorize hiring of John Lucas for the position of park maintenance supervisor at a rate of $27,500 per year for 30, for a 30-hour week, and classify him as a full-time employee as defined by Section 14 of the personnel policy with eligibility of all benefits of a full-time employee as defined within the personnel policy.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
I, well, I'm not voting right now.
Oh, you need excuse from Barbie?
Do you want to vote? No, I'm, yeah, right. I know you recommended, and that's what we've been holding to, not voting on anything.
I have the, it's applicable after the 30-day, after the publication.
Okay. Because I'll, so I'll abstain from voting.
Yeah, you've been doing.
Respect for that.
Thank you.
So did we hear from you?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So we have a unanimous decision as motion passes.
And, oh, I've got two other things, but I can do those in a different court. That's all I have.
Okay. And next up.
Wait, hang on one second. I'm sorry. Councilman Van den Berg had asked me to pass out some information that I received from the BOE Board of Elections in response to the mayor's letter that was sent out a few weeks ago. And this is the information that I received back from the Board of Elections for the petition for the charter change. Kristin, I don't know how to say her last name. Basically, I'll just read what she said. Kristina, we have not received any signatures from the petitioner yet. If a voter would like to have their name removed, I suggest they contact the petitioner first and ask them to strike their name through the record. They should also send a written request to our office with their name, address, date of birth, and signature. I will process the petition signature sheets once received and be sure not to include any residents in that removal request. Information can be emailed to kristin, K-R-I-S-T-I-N dot J-A-C-U-M-I-N at unioncountync.gov, fax to 704-283-1083, or mail to Union County Board of Elections at PO Box 1106, Monroe, North Carolina 28111. If anybody has any questions, they can contact her directly at 704-283-3710. This was information that I received directly from her in response to having questions about that.
Great, thank you.
So the petition, if it does go through, that whoever's collecting and collects it may send to the Board of Elections to be verified?
That's correct.
Okay. And then they'll compare that to anyone who decided to change their mind?
From my understanding from the email, that's what Kristin says, yes.
Great.
Thank you. So you're good?
I'm good.
Okay. Next up, we have planners' report. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. First thing in the planners' report is that the Firethorn, fireworks has been postponed by the technician, the company. They don't have a postponement date, and that's all I know. I will keep you updated. But they did renew their fireworks up.
So they got a new permit. I saw that, but, but, so they postponed it?
They postponed.
Did they give you a reason?
COVID.
But isn't that up to the town and the village to determine that? Just ask.
Well, not the village, because it's not our thing.
Yeah, we just gave them a permit to do it, but not.
It's the Firethorns.
Or anything.
The gathering definition is probably why they decided.
It's going to exceed 10 people or 50 people.
Well, we've done.
But it's okay to have protests. Just a point.
Well, sure wearing a mask.
But again, you raise a good point, but the protest is constitutional right, and that's going to trump a firework, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I get that.
But won't we be like?
I'm sorry, I'm confused. Maybe it's not a stupid question, but what is the confined area? Is there a certain area? Because, I mean, I can watch fireworks from two miles away. I don't, I'm confused. I can respect COVID, but my gracious, if I sit in the woods somewhere with a mask on, does that, do I count?
I mean, according to the permit of the event, there's like a gathering place where people are supposed to come and sit.
Can they control it there and just allow someone in and just say the rest? You got to go down the street and sit in a car watching?
I just don't, I don't, all right, I don't get it, because there's too many, there's too many variables at play. There's masks, there's social distancing, there's, so which one are we going by? Are we going by social distancing with no masks? Are we going by mask and you don't have to social distance? What are we, what is, there's, there's no, there's no direct.
So, Ronan, just so I'm clear, we had no involvement.
Well, Tim's point is they notified you based on their decision.
So it's, I mean, it's not really even our thing.
No, it's not. But I'm saying, like, the fireworks place said that.
Yeah, the gathering. I get 100% your point. And, and I think it's ridiculous that they would postpone it, because most people are not gathering. They're watching from their homes or across the road or down the road or wherever with their own private parties.
But I wonder if Firethorn asked them to postpone it, and they were just letting us know that it's postponed.
I mean, I just asked them, hey, did you renew your permit? And they said, yeah, but by the way.
You and I, Jamie, can take it upon ourselves, or you two, or whatever, and just go and find out. Because I'm curious that why they would, what their reason was and stuff. Because I will tell you, if we do it, we'll be one of the few. And it may be a nice thing that you can actually have an outdoor event safely, responsibly, and do that, but.
So we've approved the permit. They're ready to go with us. It's really, at this point, between the HLA and whoever's paying for it and the vendor itself.
Okay.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, all we had to do is approve the authorization.
We're not being, we're just learning of it, and we're not necessarily.
Yeah, that's what's followed, because when they first, when you first approved the.
It had been expired, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I just wanted to follow up and say that.
Thank you, Ronan.
They have indeed renewed their.
Anything else?
Okay, we got a lot.
Yeah, I just wanted to update you on some of the contracts. Just to say that we have three contracts, and all of them are expected to finish by the end of the month. Obviously, the Parks and Greenways master plan is about to wrap up. The code reorganization, they might finish the reorganization by the end of the month and then hand it off to me to, you know, get, take it through the process, revisions and adoption. But we are also switching to their code post, so it'll be a little easier and technical support as opposed to a contract, a consult, and just like disappearing at the end of this week. And the Village Center renderings are almost done, and present them at the next meeting. That's all, just updates on.
All right.
Finally, as I said last time, we're going to start like a, we're going to trial run of a planning board staff summary, which is basically just, it's not minutes, it's not coming from them, it's just coming from me to tell you what was roughly discussed at the planning board meeting. And for this previous planning board meeting, I mean, the main takeaways are that they wrapped up the land use plan and gave it to the council for your review. And the other thing is that they discussed the future land use map in depth. It's over there on the wall. You've seen it plenty of times. They started with the Village Center and talked about various adjacent property owners who also wanted to be included in the Village Center. Some were removed from consideration, some were decided that they should be residential only, but the types of residential could be discussed to be, you know, more cohesive with such a district. And they, they're talking about also having some light commercial as well, light commercial on the fringes, some fringe properties, so there's like a transition of intensity. And they're kind of halfway through that discussion. So nothing has been voted on or decided, but it's just kind of an update to show you the map that is in the planners' report is like a combination of things that they're discussing and things that they are going to be discussing at the next meeting.
Just a note that I'll mention here is if council likes the way this is going, at some point, we can use this staff summary as maybe one of our communication pieces out to the public so they're, you know, familiar with what's going on in said boards. Just an idea.
Yep, I like it.
But then do we continue to need a liaison then from one of the council members on stuff like that?
Yeah, that's, no, that's a great idea still, because Bob can be present to say, this is what council thinks or said at the last meeting, or, you know, the planning board wants to ask a council member something, like he's available. And, I mean, Bob can also can probably tell you what he thinks about having a planning board liaison. What do you think about it?
I'm fine.
Man, man, a few words. I like that.
I'm clinging to the speaker, because I can only hear. Oh.
Yeah. How's that?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, sorry. I should have came closer. Yeah, I was just saying how, you know, having a planning board liaison has been good and is a good idea, so.
Keep, keep talking, keep talking to the speaker so I can hear, because you cut off of me there.
I was just saying how I thought having a planning board liaison was a good idea, so I was just asking you if you thought so too.
So you mean, what were you saying about the planning board liaison? I'm sorry, it's breaking up.
All right.
So Bob, he's referring to you attending the planning board meetings as a council liaison at, at those meetings, and how he thought, how he thinks that it's beneficial and for it to continue.
Okay.
Okay, well.
All right.
Sorry.
Well said. Christina. Kind of an insight. Apparently, we're not projecting our voices while they're hopefully better.
Oh, sorry.
All right. So is that, okay?
I have one more thing that I didn't put in the memo, just as you requested. Reminder that the CPNI workshop on the Village Center.
Oh, yeah.
Is this week, Thursday afternoon and Friday morning. And if you haven't already and you're going to be there, Barbie has sent out the, a letter that explains, there's a link in the email, and there's a registration link.
So we need to register.
Yeah, so you have to click the link, register, and.
I'll put out a potential form notice.
So, can you do me a favor? Just send it to the council people, they'll have it?
You have it.
I sent it to you yesterday.
In your email.
Okay.
It's in your email, but if you want to bring it out for you.
I must have overlooked it. I already have it on my schedule, is what I'm saying, so. But it ends at noon on Friday, correct?
Yeah, it's nine to 12 on Friday, and it's one to four on Thursday.
Right.
So you can come whenever you want. They're requesting that you come physically for being the mayor.
Go to it? Like, here?
Well, no.
Where is it?
It's on Zoom. Everyone's.
Oh, yeah, so I'll be there. I'm gonna be there. I just thought I had to be, I thought we were, some were doing it here, and some were doing it at home. I wanted to do it at home.
No, I'm probably gonna be the only one here. Maybe Christina will jump in and out. Or you'll come, too?
I think I might come in, um, on the web. Do you have another special meeting?
Confused with the word.
Oh, God, we have a special meeting Thursday.
Yeah, we actually do.
Yeah, I'll be there.
The PRG in the morning.
I'm gonna come in at some point, because I gotta do the financials.
Okay.
So.
Regardless, I'll have the meeting set up here, just like I do at the PRG meetings and planning board meetings. So technically, it's open to the public. Anyone that wants to come can come here and witness this workshop, or they can join the Zoom meetings.
That's what I was asking. I, I may come here, but I'll probably go.
You can do whichever.
Okay.
Are you also gonna have our joint meeting set up like that, here?
Yes, yes. So same way, PRG members can join either on WebEx or come here. Like last time, half of them were here, half of them are on WebEx. It's whatever, as long as we don't have 10 people in a room.
Cool.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Rose reports.
I have just a question. Is there one area of it that you recommend that we participate in than over any other, like the initial first hour, or can you recommend that?
Um, yeah, my, I guess if you were to prioritize, either the first hour or the last hour are the best ones. The last hour is gonna be where you hear all of the results of the workshop. So if you could only make it to the last hour, the 11 to 12 on Friday, that's the best hour to come.
Okay.
Do we get C U credits?
Four hours.
We didn't organize that, sorry.
Thank you, Rohit. Rose report we have up next. Christina?
I do have a couple of things. As you recall, the last several months, we have been discussing traffic mitigation ideas along Joe Kerr in response to the tragic event that we had in the wintertime. And next, actually tomorrow, I'm meeting with Marvin Creek, Rattles Pass, Wyndham Hall, and Cannonville Creek HOAs, and we're all kind of brainstorming some ideas for fundraising and cost sharing to accomplish at least one or a couple of different crosswalks in that area, as presented to you all at the last council meeting as an option. And we had estimated around $30,000 per crosswalk.
Awesome.
But the strips are, is they still in play? Didn't we talk about some sort of strips or something to slow down?
Uh, that.
In that area?
That's encompassed in that.
Okay.
The next thing I have is, passed out some information to you all earlier about Marvin Creek. This is a little bit of a weird situation that we just became aware of this week.
Which one is it?
Uh, the email looked, looked like this.
Okay.
So a gentleman by the name of John Williams had been emailing us and rapping to the roundabout at Marvin Creek. We went back and looked at some history, and I don't know exactly how this happened, but this was one of the very first streets that Marvin took over when we went into Powellville the first time. And when we went back in the second time, I think something must have gotten missed in our assessment, because this street, this section of this roundabout, we don't even own the entire roundabout, we only own half of it, which is very awkward. This is the section that we own, the pictures that are exhibited here.
Oh, well, the cracks are.
Uh, so it definitely needs to be repaired or resurfaced. We will get it on our resurfacing assessment that was just done in the fall, and I'm sure it's gonna be top of the list as far as low ranking, higher priority. In the meantime, Mr. Williams is kind of screaming, you know, let's get something done, it's been like this for a while, and it just keeps getting worse. So I have sent, sent this to the engineer to see if there's a way we can just patch it. My, my assumption is no. It looks like it needs to have some actual resurfacing done. And in that case, we have been operating under the premise that we do resurfacing one fell swoop as DOT does it. And we know we're not doing that this year. So I don't know if this is something that council wants to address separately, and let me get a quote from A M T to get this done pretty quick, or if they'll just wanna add this to the resurfacing schedule, and it'll get addressed potentially next year or where it falls in that list.
So this is one of the road areas where, correct me if I'm wrong, that when we got into certain things owning certain roads, that former council picked cul-de-sacs and they owned certain parts that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And I don't know if this was in, I didn't look at the previous assessment where, before my time, where DOT and A M T coordinated to get some of the most recent resurfacing done. But I know it's not in our existing one that we have now, which leads me to believe that it's probably not in the one that was previously done, because I don't, I really don't think that we were under the assumption that we owned it. A M T didn't even.
How did we figure that out?
We looked at the Powellville maps that, that DOT has, and there's this very small little section.
And why did A M T not catch that?
I have no idea. It's, it's a, it's just a fluke thing.
It should be a whole list of what we owned before we walked in there, and it should have been.
It's part of Tom Short Road. And Rohit, can you hear me, Rohit?
Yes.
Can you, can you bring the Powellville map real fast?
Um, the 2012 one or the current one?
It, it doesn't matter, anyone. I've got one on my, in my office, I'm taking on the wall.
I mean, I'm gonna, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I do not want to be the one that is making the decision on when roads get done and what roads get done. So you can bring it to A M T's attention, and as we resurface next, if they feel like it needs to be done, then.
I'll get him.
It needs to be done.
He's looking at it right now to see if we can repair it just separately, and hopefully we can just kind of cold patch it and just let it be for a little while.
So, just for the record, to get some of you guys up to speed, if you may have not known, to get into Powellville funds, they changed the rules and said, oh, no, you have to own roads, okay, if you're gonna, and you have to have a 5% cent tax at least. Well, what former council did is they picked roads, but they picked typically cul-de-sacs, dead end spots, which is.
I just saw you, where did you do it?
Where I think DOT got a little upset with us, and I'm sure other towns may have done the same thing, but they, they picked very small sections and end of roads that didn't get much travel. I'm surprised to learn that this roundabout is on it, because I thought they limited it to.
It's a straight line, so how do we?
Well, that, that's not the scale. If you actually zoom in closer to it, there's, if you, can you pull the DOT?
Is it like, is it like a half moon?
Yeah.
So.
So it's, it's really awkward.
So it's not a roundabout?
No, it is. We own half of the roundabout.
Oh, what?
We only own half of the roundabout.
That's, I.
Just by chance, you own the half, you own the half of the pass repairs.
Of course we do. Miller Hap looks great.
But, but I, I thought, and I, and I don't know if this was, I think this was before me, but I'm not sure, but I thought they only picked cul-de-sacs, and roundabouts were never part of it. That's why I'm surprised to learn that this roundabout, even though it's half of it, is part of this.
So, and that's, that's, that's what I was surprised, too, because I, you know, argued with him that, no, we didn't own it at that time, but I actually went back and tried to trail it to see where we, we owned it. 2010, I found a Powellville map where we owned nothing. 2012 or 13, I found a Powellville map where we had those little cul-de-sacs and those little tiny streets and this little section right here.
Okay.
So it was taken, it was taken on at the same time.
Okay.
Joe, that was a strategic move.
Oh, I, I absolutely know it was, and then that.
And the gentleman was telling me something about.
Oh, did, did it have to do with the gate?
But, yeah.
Oh.
Well, it was Powellville as well, yeah.
So Christine? That, that was, yeah, it was, it had to do with the gate and the Powellville, but that's why they picked it, I guarantee it.
So we have budgeted funds in the fiscal year that's coming up, it's gonna be June, uh, July 1st. Is that the DOT map?
Yeah. What I'm passing out is the DOT map, so these are all the roads that DOT owns. And so when you see this segment I've circled, which is missing, that's what we own. This is a half move shape that Kim was talking about.
So, Christine, can we?
I got you, thank you.
So actually, we own two thirds of the circle.
Yes.
I, I agree with Kim, that I, I don't want to get involved in the practice of picking and choosing what gets fixed before someone else, because then it turns into a, it turns into politics.
It's a rating system, is what we've gone with.
However, how many of these have, is this one of the first ones we've, we've gotten for this?
This, so, two things. This is the first one that I have found that has followed through the cracks and not got into the assessment, to have been assessed from year one or year two in the cycle. This is also the first request that I've actually had of, of a major issue where a citizen is requesting a pothole or something to be repaired. We do have funding that I have budgeted in the July 1st, that starts this, this coming up July 1st, for repairs and potholes and that sort of thing. And I told him, i, i, if it's a high priority, I don't see why council wouldn't get it addressed pretty quickly in that budget if that's what the engineer recommends. So in short, they would be on the top of the list in terms of requests. Whether it takes priority among other things that are needed, I don't know, because I don't have an assessment of those.
Regardless, I think it's, it's a miss on our part. Who's fault? I mean, we, we missed it on that, and that would have been considered, I would think, and, and we'll just leave it up to A M T to decide, okay, does this warrant, you know, is the way they'd have to look at it, because you, you wanted, that was not in play, because they probably didn't look at it thinking it was in play.
One of the things that A M T is gonna look at in making the decision if it needs to be corrected now or waiting, is the fact if, if the substrate is gonna be messed up if we wait longer. If we can come in and repair it and preserve that under, you know, that undersurface, then I think that he would make that recommendation. We need to do something pretty quickly, as, as opposed to waiting two more years, because you're just gonna damage it even further, and then you're gonna have a higher need to.
What are we gonna do? Resurface two thirds of the roundabout and leave the rest the way it is?
Well, this is.
If you coordinate with DOT and their picking schedule, you'll allocate the costs.
Where we were typically doing, like, with Firethorn, where, or another neighborhood, where we, they own some portions, Marvin Creek, they still own some portions, DOT does, and that would be an area where we piggyback off of DOT's contractor to do our small little segment, get cost savings with them, and then take it over once it's done, get one fell swoop.
Is the rest of this cul-de, cul-de-sac in bad repair as well, or is it just?
The roundabout?
Yeah, or the, the roundabout, is it, or is it just the section that we're responsible for?
Rohit, you actually went to site visit, so what, is the entire roundabout bad, or just the section that we own?
Yeah, the, the section that DOT owns is also bad, but the section that we own is worse.
I, I go by there all the time, so.
I hadn't paid any attention to it.
So we just, I think, what, we gotta get our head wrapped around this, is to your point about piggybacking when they're ready to do it, and you'd want to do the whole thing. You're not gonna do half of it. And then we work out something with DOT, maybe we, you know, have them share that cost, and then they turn that portion over to us. So we own the whole, I, I, you can't get into owning half roundabouts. You own the whole roundabout.
Yeah, DOT is not doing anything this year, so we already know that.
That's true.
So the only thing that we could potentially do this year is, is cold seal it, patch seal it, if that's something that A M T recommends. And that would be something that we would consider in that budgeted line where we have the repairs.
Let's just see what A M T comes back with.
Okay.
Because again, I'm not, I'm not, if you guys don't make that decision, that's fine, but I'm.
Okay, anything else?
Um, do you have something else? But I think we're natural agenda. Yeah, I don't have anything else.
Okay, I have a question, under Rose.
Okay.
Since we had the COVID stuff going on and no school, et cetera, et cetera, we let the officers on the corner go for the time being. It is starting to stack up again.
Okay.
So do you guys want to start having?
An officer there?
Mm-hmm.
Or just put the money out, and it's there if they want to. But again, we, we committed only till school was out, and now school is out.
We changed that.
We did?
We changed it with the new fiscal year, which starts in July, but we, we haven't spent money, so we could, and this year, we could still do it in this year.
Wow.
We still have funding.
Is traffic really that bad over there?
It was stacked up.
Gets pretty, the more people going back to work, the worse it's getting.
Sure.
And, you know, and that becomes a safety concern, because then people start taking chances.
Yeah, when I, yes, at 5:00, when I came back, it was almost to the, the driveway at Gracie Manor.
And at 6:00, there was nobody there. And remember, we gotta have it for three hours, right? So I would say, if we're gonna do that, if, if we're gonna do that, put them on that for that critical 4 o'clock, and then have them take the other two hours and go patrol part of Marvin. Because if there's nobody there, I hate to just pay, because we have to do.
It's a great idea, because they can run traffic. They can run, and the, where, the racetrack.
Oh, the racetrack. It, it doesn't matter, even if they just patrol, and, you know.
But that's what I'm saying, is the, the racetrack.
What time did you want, want them to start patrol?
Well, that's just it. I, I don't know what.
I'd say.
We need three hours, though, right? They're not gonna do it unless they're there for three hours. So we got.
I'd say 4:30.
An hour, and, and maybe if we, if we can allow them to decide, and I don't know if we can do that, and just say, hey, if it starts getting lightened up, and they just go for a drive and go through the neighborhoods, or.
Yeah, but just say, tell them to use their discretion.
If you do 4:30, it'll be better, because that's when the patrol squads get off, and they can get off regular shift and go over there and start doing that at that time. If you do 4:00.
Right, everybody's on shift.
Somebody's taking off. So if you do 4:30, 4:30 or 5:00.
Is the shift.
Probably get a lot more sign up.
Okay, so.
So 4:30.
So start at 4:30, and have them be there for an hour, hour and a half, and take the other hour and a half and go patrol the rest of Marvin. Is that fair?
Well, that's good.
Absolutely.
I'd just tell them to use their discretion and when to leave.
Yeah.
If it stays busy, stay there. But if it, if it doesn't, then, and then maybe come
back while you're patrolling the rest, and if it gets busy again, jump out. And, and I know that's not necessarily a, but.
It would have breaks it up, but it won't be so many.
And, and people will start seeing the officer more. That'll be what you think.
More presence is.
More presence.
Absolutely.
And when would this start?
I'll send them an email tomorrow, and I'm sure they could get it in the next couple of days. Worst case scenario, I'd say Monday, but hopefully sooner than that.
All right, moving on, we have, nothing more on Rose?
No, sir.
Okay, no more questions, I assume. So we'll move on to deputies report.
Bob, can you hear me? I can't hear you, thank you. I had, there were two accidents. It's pretty good, pretty low for a month of May. 19 alarms, 19 traffic stops. There were no car break-ins, and there were no reported home break-ins. Everything was pretty low. I didn't put it on here, and I, I forgot to add it on to the bottom. There's been some vandalism. I'm still investigating it, and I've got some good leads, so I can't say anything else about it right now, but I should be able to get it figured out. With everything going on, just want to say thanks for y'all's love and support. So, means a lot to us. We got a good county, and it's a good area, so just want to say thanks for y'all's support and love, so.
There's no plan to defund you, I promise you that.
Y'all gonna vote to defund the?
No, no, we, we appreciate your service, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And for all your work, and unfortunate, there's a few that create a bad name, but I think what you guys do and what people see, it's amazing that we can still recruit people to do what you do, so, um, thank you.
Stephen, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
If we've got, like, solicitors that are being super aggressive.
Yeah, I'm interested on that, too.
Yeah.
Last night, another deputy made contact with that gentleman and ran him off, so I[1721.26]
If we've got like solicitors that are being super aggressive-
Yeah, I'm interested on that too.
Yeah.
Last night, another deputy made contact with that gentleman and ran him off. So, I don't think there should be any more problems with him.
Oh, he keeps coming back and saying, oh, yeah, I talked to, I don't know if he was back today.
I know a guy I made contact with, my son, a deputy did like 5:30, I think.
Okay.
And ran him off. And I don't think he'll be back.
Okay, because he said, he told other neighbors that he had talked to somebody.
He said Officer Brown. We don't even have an Officer Brown. He lied and made that up.
Okay.
Yeah, he made up Officer Brown.
Okay. All right. So, somebody did talk to him?
Yeah, last night, yeah.
But we should call 911 if that, because-
Or the non-emergency number.
Okay, because he was apparently super aggressive.
Yeah, I heard he was too.
Yeah, okay. Cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Officer Brown.
All right. Next up, we have Planning Board Chair Report. Chairman Jones.
Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay, good. I figured out how to do this. I only have really two comments. One, I will, you know, sort of respond on Councilman Markleese being a liaison. You know, he sits in, which I think is what he ought to be doing, you know, not being an active member. But if we have a question regarding, you know, what the council may want or, you know, pass some comment back to the council, I think it's beneficial. So, if he's willing to stick with us, you know, I think it's good for us.
I'm good with it.
Okay. He didn't force me what was said, you know, if you're willing to stick. And then secondly, I do understand that each of you now have a copy of the text of the amended land plan to start reviewing. And I didn't really expect any to be on the agenda tonight because I read it before. It will take you a while and I hope you, you know, I hope that it takes you a while. But if they have it in your hands. And whenever it's, whenever you feel it's, you know, need to bring it up, a question or whatever, you know, we'll be available.
John, in the planning meeting, I'm trying to remember, did you want like a deadline of, like the end of this month? Did I have that in my mind with you? What was I trying to remember?
No, I did have a deadline, but what I was pushing for to get it in your hands because I know that you are not going to be able to, you know, digest it all and respond in, you know, one meeting or, you know, a couple of weeks. Or at least, that's not what I'm expecting is a rubber stamp. I'm expecting you to, each of you to read it, digest it, you know, come up with questions, comments, recommendations, you know, that you want to see change, you know. So, I just, I recognize it's going to take a while. And so, that's the reason I wanted to get at least that major part of it in your hands. And we're moving on with the maps. And while not quite as extensive as far as debate as the text was, you know, this is not going to take us just one meeting to get through that and to make our recommendation on maps.
So, you would suggest we all late night reading, whatever, get through it and really kind of go through everything. So, your ideas, are we going to get back together as a planning board and council back and forth or no?
Well, that's up to you. You know, you're the folks that are in charge. We just recommend. So, however you want to do, if you think that we need to put mail together, that's fine. But it, like I said, it's going to take, I hope it takes you a while to digest it. You know, that's the, you know, if it does, that's what it means you're doing your job.
Right.
Rohit, we have it on the work session to kind of start talking about it, correct, at the end of the month?
Yes, that's correct. While the planning board wasn't the one that put the deadline, I think it was you actually that said, let's try to have it by the June 25th. So, so, yes.
Well, nice job getting it to us.
Yes.
Well, it is, I didn't believe it was going to take as long as it did, quite honestly.
Well-
And so, that's the reason I'm not expecting you to just flip it right, right around.
Well, good job. And good job to all the planning board. We appreciate all the, all the hard work.
Thank you.
That's all? Thank you, John.
I'm done.
All right. So, next up, we have PRG Chair Report. Former Chairman Andy Workman. Are you going to take this?
Yeah, I guess I'll field this one. Basically, one of our main things that we did at the past meeting was the final draft for the master plan, which you all saw. We made a few minor changes to it from what was presented here, but it wasn't anything too major. Just some of the ways, some of the pages read and that kind of thing. Moved a couple of quotes and just a few minor things. Marsh hasn't had much going on. A lot of their stuff has been postponed or canceled because of the COVID thing. And then we discussed national night out planning. From what I got from Derek, and Steven's not here, but from what I understand, coming from the Sheriff's Department, they have moved it to the backup date in November because of the COVID, or October.
Really?
They have a, they have a backup date.
October the 6th, I think it is.
The 6th.
For national night out?
For national night out.
So, Tuesday night?
Yeah, it's another, yeah. It's just a couple of months later. So, that's one of the big things. So, we have some more time to plan for that and figure out how things will go.
And we have a budget for that, right?
Yeah. Well, the Sheriff's Department handles 90% of it. It's just PRG helps with the-
But I know in the past, they went around and got a lot of donations and stuff in the past and stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I still think we should, for that reason, we tap into all of the HOAs. So, maybe a letter that goes out, and Barbie, we can maybe draft a letter to go out to all the HOAs to encourage them to participate in national night out. Because we used to do it, as you know, in the past, you're fighting to get people there. If we can all have it at the park, even if 19, think about this, if 19 or 15 different HOAs chipped in 100 bucks, that's 1,500 bucks. That makes that a much nicer event. And I can assure you that they probably have that in the budget. But we got to, she could have it.
I was going to say, I would, I'd like to invite Steven to our joint meeting on Thursday because we can at least start planning it and he can kind of, he can get up to speed. And he can also kind of get our new deputy up to speed whenever he starts in July.
Steven actually did last year's.
Yeah, but I mean, but I mean like-
Transfer over, but he did the biggest part of it.
We have some more time and we can kind of brainstorm with him on how we can help and put out information and what he can do and-
And think about it, we do it so right that we get a lot of, I swear, almost every sheriff is sitting over at Effer Park with the sheriff and all the officers and all the different equipment and stuff where, and it's national night out and we have them there versus other union county towns that don't have this organized. So, we should-
Start on top of it. That's a big deal. Between the Christmas event and that event, those are two large events per year. And they are pretty, pretty close in numbers. We do a lot of that.
Do we have a spot on the agenda?
For, for that, yes.
We do?
Yes.
Perfect. Good. So, that would be, that's fine. But that would be great if Steven could be there.
And I would encourage if you are in an HOA within the village, that we reach out to our own HOAs as we, if we can, and just let them know. And if it has any pull to help with that, I know I'll be going to mine, so.
Yes, you can.
So, that was the big, most of the meeting.
All right. Thank you, Ann. All right. Next up, we have consent agenda. I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
For the discussion. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need to physically, I need to hear you. Thank you. Next up, public hearing. We don't have any public hearings, correct?
No, sir.
It's just the placeholder. Village Hall, we don't have anything?
I just wanted to make note, Captain Malinas is working on the meeting with the elders. Hopefully, we'll have that maybe this week.
I still have another follow-up team in the White House.
And then I think, Mr. Mayor, you had asked me, or someone had asked me to inquire on the tax value of the property at the end of the street and it's roughly $165,000. Would you do it?
Yeah, throw that on me. Why not? While I'm not voting yet, just throw everything at me.
$165,000. There's two parcels and the tax value is approximately $165,000.
Put that in your little Village Hall folder.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Nothing else? All right. Unfinished business. First up, we have discussion consideration of the PRG Master Plan Final Draft.
Come up with this. So, as Andy said, we do have some revisions from the PRG board. The final, the master plan is basically in front of you and they did make those revisions. So, you do have what can be the final adopted plan in front of you. Of course, you can also make revisions. You could make, you could adopt a contingent on revisions. You could tell me that, no, something needs more research and we can take this back. So, that's basically where we are. You can adopt it or you can revise it.
I would definitely like some notation of easements in there before, before we adopt it. And I mean, we, you know, if everybody's good to adopt it to, we can, you know, adopt it with the, you know, revisions to be made. But I definitely think that that should be on there.
I can agree with that. That makes it a little bit more concise and that's what we've been going for.
Yes, and it just helps, you know, okay, we have this easement. Does it make sense to go ahead and like, let's put this at the top? Like, it kind of helps, again, we've prioritized it. But if we have the easement, then it just gives it a little more, you know.
So, and if that's the only change that y'all are recommending, whether we have the easements or not, does it really, I think, it's not really going to affect his short-term and long-term plans. So, what you could do to-
No, it's not. I just, I just want it notated in there.
What you could do to him is just probably asterisk those that we already have secured and then just put a little thing at the bottom of the table that says, you know, the asterisk means this has been secured. I think that's probably the easiest.
And either secured by us or going to be secured by DOT for like NC-16, like that kind of stuff.
So, you could do one asterisk for, we have it, two asterisks for, to be secured by DOT. It's probably the easiest way to do it.
And that'll be involving some research on my part just to make sure. So, that's, just, I'm mostly talking to Tim that we'll, we'll have to figure out which easements are in which category.
So, any of the verbiage we're not here to change or anything?
We can, if you want to.
I just, I, a quick couple of things that highlight on page two when you're in the first introduction.
Okay, hang on.
The very bottom, and I was working off my original notes. I wasn't working off of what was presented. This was from the last time, the work session.
Hang on, what page?
Page two.
Oh, my word. Page two.
Just the introduction, just clarifying. At the very bottom of the second paragraph, it starts, "The 2020 Village of Marvin Greenway's master plan serves to coordinate actions in a collaborative effort with..." I'd like to, I'd like to note both residential and commercial, not just developers. So, they know that it's, it may be a big thing or not, but the clearer we are with these things is-
Residents?
So, private landowners as you go down. We had discussed the reverbage of that as well on that last call.
But we're not going to, okay, so we're not going to involve any commercial developers, just residential?
We just left it very bland with developers.
That's fine. We didn't want to get too specific because we didn't want to necessarily, you don't need anybody.
Yeah, that's fine. And then just clarification, impact as far as, if I'm looking at page four, there's an impact that it showed at Little Miami Scenic Trail 2008. Price increases every foot by $7. Is that a square foot?
Um, let's see.
It's got to be a square foot.
I hope so. So, in a, in a case for that, then if you think about it, a 5,000-square-foot home would add about $35,000 value to the property, if I read that right. If that's per square foot.
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay.
All right. So, let's, let's do square foot.
Per square foot.
Tim, are you making these notes or do we need Rohit to do it?
I am making these notes. I would love to have somebody that can back me up on it.
I got it. Okay. All right. Rohit said he's taking the notes. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, we got lots of people taking notes.
I liked how you incorporated, just about making notes. You incorporated on page eight from the survey, I assume, about trails, existing trails. I think Kim and I met with someone a while ago that was very involved with that. And it's, his, his whole thing was, you know, build the trails first and then the community grows around that. But we're, we're doing it a little bit different and trying to incorporate these trails in here. I'm just going to go through real quick as I made notes on all that. I think we talked about what determines the surface. I think that's going to come down to the PRG and the council deciding on that. Opening of fields, we talked about that. I was always, obviously, anytime you put a shovel to the thing, we have to worry about a budget that goes along with it. And is there, is there a formula for that? As you do, as you do these, say, these four types of trails, is there a formula for every mile, expect to, to assign $30 a foot, a linear foot to maintain? I'm thinking for future budgets.
Yeah. No, around the time I had there isn't a set formula. And I think, you know, what you have to think about is that, that cost is going to change over time. So, for instance, you know, a asphalt greenway, you probably won't have to do any maintenance to except once every 10 years. And I would hate to put a figure to, it's 10 years away from now. So, no, there isn't a set formula for that.
I liked your idea of the funding opportunities. I think that we highlight that to the community that let them know that, I don't know if we can do a 501(c)(3), but any kind of, we're going to probably consider bonds. But there may be people out there that are willing to get their name on something and donate whatever it is they want to donate, matching funds, that kind of thing. We can, we can do something pretty creative with that too. But everything looked, looked really good. I was very impressed overall. So, I think I'll just, I'll leave it at that and Kim will be very happy with me. I'd just like to point out, I just, I find it interesting, majority of households are 10 years or less. So, and employment.
Is that the whole survey?
Yeah, that's the survey.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't add, we took that, or Park Circle Greenway took that out.
They took it from it, but it was just, I was pulling, making notes on that. And then even, well, it's, it's not really related to this, so I'll let it go. Because that's more of a land use plan thing. So, okay. We're good?
Bob, you got any, you know?
No, I think that it was very well done. I started, gave a look at it and I thought it was very well put together. In fact, it really gives us a plan. I don't know what was prior, but it's very succinct. So, thanks again to-
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Jamie? So, just to reiterate, this, this master plan that we have here today is basically just a cleaned up, updated version of the previous Greenway's master plan. We didn't really change the maps much. We didn't change a lot of that, correct?
Yeah, the biggest thing about this project is that we updated some of the benefits, the funding, prioritization, things like that. I passed around this map here, the 2013 Greenway Conceptual Plan. That went through a very rigorous public input process. And we just used pretty much the same map with minor revisions based on things that we found are impossible to build or whatever. And, and so, the consultant didn't have any, you know, big part in deciding where the trails go.
Okay. It was coming, it was coming from a pre-approved plan that had tons of public input.
Exactly.
Okay. That's what I needed to have. Thank you.
So, do we want to take any action today or no?
I'm ready to adopt it with the revisions.
Yeah, because my, my concern around the funding, you know, that piece is entirely in there, but it's up to us to really kind of sift through that. in there, but it's up to us to really kind of sift through that and identify how we go about doing it.
How do we do that?
One thing I can say to this, the funding part of it is, is that this was based on what it could be down the road. The sooner we do it, the cheaper it's going to be.
Sure. And the more, and the more we can do together.
Right, and then finding, and like he said, leveraging our money against rent money is going to be very, very beneficial to this, expediting this getting done and, you know, the sooner the better, the cheaper.
Now, you don't have to look at the $2.2 million and think, how are we going to raise 2.2? But you think about it like CRTPO is going to give 1 million if we get on their prioritization schedule. And I've applied for that, to be on their next funding, project fund funding schedule. Then the county put Marvin Road on the federal aid network, so maybe we get a half million from the federal. And then we, if the village center happens, you know, developers may be responsible for 200K worth of sidewalk. And suddenly, you know, we're only responsible for 200K of that 2.2 million. And that's how, that's how we can make it happen.
So can we, sorry, yeah, can we then, Rohit, maybe at July's work session, can you come back to us with kind of suggestions? Obviously talk with, you know, Park Truck and Greenway at the meeting in July, but come back to us then with kind of, you know, here are our opportunities, here are, kind of here are our next steps to try to start securing some of this grant money, this federal aid money, and kind of start laying out like what you just talked about, like the CRTPA stuff, like where would that be applicable? Where, you know, you just said the Marvin Road, so Marvin Road's got the possibility of, you know, some federal funding. But just kind of lay it out for us for that work session in July and we can kind of start to wrap our head around it and figure out how we're going to do this. Obviously, we've heard in the survey that, you know, greenways, walking trails, public spaces are what the, you know, the village wants the most, so, you know, that sounds like that's, you know, top priority, TP.
I want to put you to work, Chaplain. Now, this is a silly question, but I'm, questions are, ideas are free, right?
There you go. It might not always be right.
We're certainly not a charitable organization, but have you ever heard of towns doing 501(c)(3) to do where people can take from their charitable assets, funds, and direct them to helping out a community in whether it's a roundabout or whatever because of the, you know, I mean, is that...
I've heard of towns creating entities with either like an economic development or they could form a charitable, as long as it's related to the public purpose of the town. And whether or not they could do a tax deductible donation to the village, you're still a, you're a nonprofit, you just aren't a 501(c)(3). You're a governmental entity that operates without a profit. I can find that out relatively quickly, but...
The only reason I'm asking, because you just don't know what you don't know and if you have it out there and it's another mechanism to trigger and then maybe someone comes in and says, I'll do a matching thing up to X amount of dollars, and then it becomes where the community, because we're, as individuals, we're kind of spoiled, we want things now. I see when they talk about 20 million, I'm like, with this budget, we'll be here 40 years. And it's like, it's just so overwhelming and people want things now, but whether that happens through a bond mechanism or something else, but if there's a mechanism we can...
You think you donate to the village because you're a governmental entity, not necessarily, because there's a 501(c)(3). I mean, there's all these separate nonprofit variations, everybody knows the 501(c)(3) because of the designation and then, and all the assets go to another similar like cause. You might be able to do that and I can find that out.
There's a tax deductible mechanism to it that may benefit, that would help, and that's what, that's where I was kind of going with this. Has it ever been done before? Is it something that can be done? Because some people do want to make their, or leave a legacy, you know, whether they've been here a while or maybe they're just...
I think you can do it to a governmental entity, a donation, and get the tax benefit.
So, in that respect, if a developer donated that land on the corner, did they get a tax benefit from that?
Probably.
I would imagine they did, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what, the difference?
But you can look into it, let's say in July.
Is the council against that idea? Anyone?
No, I think that's a great idea, actually.
I think we can put it out to the community.
No, you know.
I need to confirm, but I feel like that's correct, because I've had other situations where people got confirmation and verification of values. And we've done, I advised to, they came up with the value, but we'll confirm it was donated, because I didn't want the government legacy, I was representing.
That gets in if they're donating land, then what's the true value of the land? That gets a little tricky, but if they're donating money...
Money, it's easier. And I just remember on that situation, they're like, if this property's worth 200,000, can we get a confirmation letter? And we're like, we'll confirm the donation that you indicated.
Yeah, yeah.
But oftentimes, it may not be quite that. And there would have been no other purpose for this type of request. And also, I don't think you would get the other donations that you do, these companies weren't getting them.
Some sort of...
I mean, they're donating for the public good, too, but usually they want a tax benefit.
Well, just an idea, something to...
I give that confirm.
Since we already missed the cycle is what my point was. We're going to be a full year before we even touch a grant, I would assume, right?
Well, it looks like, it looks like there's stuff in the fall that you can start applying for.
Six months, am I correct?
Excuse me?
You said that we're six months out from the next grant cycle?
It depends on the source. There might be, the Division of Water Resources grant might have a cycle that ends in the fall, in December. One issue with that source that causes, our firm applies for numerous grants to implement projects like this, is that some of the state-funded grants are funded appropriations from the legislature, obviously. And when they don't pass a budget, then those grants aren't funded immediately. And so the Division of Water Resources is behind by two cycles because there hasn't been a, you know, rat pass state budget. So that can affect it. The other thing I'll mention, just based on the conversation that y'all were just having, is, you know, some areas create friends groups, so Friends of Marvin Greenways or whatever, and that's a nonprofit that they use to collect money and funding in that way. The other thing that you might want to consider is, the City of Morganton has a Warden Parks and Recreation Foundation. It's been active for years, for 50, 60 years. And what they do is they partner with the City of Warden to build various recreational facilities, soccer fields, greenways, that kind of thing. And again, that's a nonprofit that money is funded to. So those are two things you might want to consider from that standpoint.
That's a great idea.
Tim, one question for clarity here. We obviously have limited resources here with staff as far as hours. I've been involved in Part F grant writing and administration and that sort of thing. It takes a lot of time to prepare it. So just kind of setting realistic expectations out for our board, give me a rough, I guess, equation of hours that you would think would need to be put into a successful grant project like Part F in preparing it.
Um, gosh, you know, we just submitted a part of grant for the City of Shelby for a project there that I was responsible for, and I bet, I bet I spent at least 150 hours on that.
Okay, I just wanted to set that for the towns that y'all understand. It is definitely hard for us to do our job and grant writing at the same time.
I agree, but I, again, I'm going to go back to, if we could have, I don't know, three, four like examples that we can reach out ourselves and go to and say, I don't mind going and saying, okay, how did you do this? Whereas, we're, you know, I know Tim's thrown out some ideas, but they may have been creative in this way, and they could say, listen, we tried, you know, Tim said this, we tried that, but it didn't work, it was unsuccessful. So instead of trying to recreate the wheel and doing it Marvin's way, we can still do it that way, but let's just use someone where they've kind of, they've gone through the pitfalls and the things that they've been successful at, raising money and doing this other stuff, we can, we can go in there and say, okay, let's streamline it for our sake, so we can possibly get something done sooner than later and find other forms of funding.
And I'm just talking in terms of grants, and grants are very specific to the community. A lot of, I've got tons of experience in grant writing, but a lot of it's specific in terms of statistics and, you know, the numbers that he's got from here. So we can definitely go to communities and see what they've done, but a lot of that's not really going to be useful in terms of specific grant writings, because it is specific to a project.
Got you, yeah.
But in terms of general ideas and...
Other things, maybe besides just grant writing or...
Well, but even to that point, someone can say, you know what, we had to hire three people to do that.
Yeah, well, I didn't know that was decided that they did, actually. Y'all, y'all do great writing with your facility, Tim? Okay.
We do, yeah. We've, part of grants, we have at least one or two every cycle that we're submitting for folks. Recreational Trail Program grants, we do, I used to work for the State Parks Trail System and Farmer's College was administering that grant, so that's another one that we, that we hit a lot, just because of my familiarity with that application and that process. So those are two, two that we hit hard. And then the Water Resources Grant is one that we've hit hard the last couple of years for paddle trail accesses. So, yeah, that's a service we provide, definitely.
But, and that's another point that you bring up, is, you know, once the grant's awarded, there is a lot of time that's spent on the maintenance side of things and a lot of people kind of forget about that. So that is important to note, that there is an ongoing cost associated with that as well, whether it's staff hours or hired consultants.
I'm sorry, you definitely could, I mean, you could fill somebody's time purely with implementing this plan, sourcing for grant funding, and then, you know, administering the grants once you, once you get them. So it's definitely something, like I said, I could take, take somebody's time as a full-time job in most cases.
Not trying to deter, I'm just making sure...
No, 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 I know, because I knew there was, I knew that there was, I think we had someone here before that had, has done that, and she did share with me that it does take a lot, quite a bit of time, which led to employing more people, because we thought we were going down that road.
A lot of times when folks have a grant writer specifically for it, they pay for themselves, I mean, because they, they focus on planning projects, they focus on parks and recreation projects, and they procure enough funding with various things that they basically pay their own salary from what they...
So we're going to get some writing skills down?
Why don't we talk offline with them, find out what they can offer?
Yeah, dear. I confirmed what I knew, I just wanted to see a statute, 26 U.S., United States Code, 170(c)(1), charitable contribution includes to a governmental entity.
Awesome.
So that, I was certain, because I knew I'd helped on those determination letters before.
I know, I love, I love the idea of a Friends of Marvin, Parks and Greenway.
Kim's going to have a matching one. She's going to have a matching one.
This has to be used for the public purpose, which of course y'all would be using it for. They want to make sure somebody doesn't give a donation for something built in their backyard to the government, something strange like that, but this would be, this would meet the qualification.
Okay.
Cool.
Terrific, thank you.
All right, so, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Park Truck and Greenway Master Plan, final draft with changes made tonight.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't, but just kind of blended it in there.
Oh, I knew you were just not loud, Andy.
Yeah, so that's unanimous vote.
I guess I'm stereo with Jamie.
Maybe we should go around the room where everyone's...
Right at you, Joe, and you still...
All right. Thank you, and thank you, Tim, for sticking around.
Yes, thank you, Tim, good job.
Thanks a lot, Tim, did a great job. Okay, next up?
And thanks Rohit, too. A lot of work on your part, and Park Truck and Greenway.
So next up, we have discussion and consideration for adoption, council meeting minutes for 4/7/2020, regular, but virtual. Did you guys get a chance to review that?
I did, and I did not have any changes.
Yeah.
I called Barbie on a couple of questions, right Barbie?
You did, and I researched where you made, where you questioned the motion that you made for the TUP.
Yep.
And I listened back at timestamp 7:14, you actually made the motion to approve the fireworks display on July 4th, 2020, on condition that the applicant get an updated permit to allow the display or set off the fireworks with, and you all approved the three...
Okay, so it was me, I just don't remember saying all those. Usually I know what I, remember what I said.
Oh yeah, you definitely said them.
I got a little chatty?
A little bit.
Give me a second here as I was, and then do we have anything? I don't think there was anything else I talked to you about on that, right?
No, sir.
Like I said, I'm good.
You did, you did ask about the voting part in the emotion part.
Right.
And since it was a quasi-judicial proceeding, we were going to confirm with Chaplain about whether or not you needed to be as part of that.
Right, because we hadn't passed the mayor allowing to vote yet. But it was a quasi-judicial meeting and I was allowed to vote on that? Because it shows me in the thing is voting on the removal.
I think that was first, let me see.
I think you made this...
I just see...
Right here, page three.
Page three, oh, page three, done.
That would be down at the voting part where...
You go down...
Yeah, well, it's unanimously.
Right, but it does say me separate in there and I'm not supposed to be voting.
Oh, yeah.
So should we just take that out?
Yeah, I think we can delete that reference, because you weren't voting at that time.
Right.
But I will note that these were very precise for the quasi-judicial, the government, thank you, because they're, they're a different level than all the questions we're on.
So everywhere that I have him showing a confirmed?
Yeah.
Yay, then I can just strike that?
Right.
Okay, so that's what I'll do, is I'll just strike all those.
Everyone okay with that?
What about when you asked him the question? When you questioned the council on page one?
That's for everybody.
That's for everyone, okay.
For everybody to be fair and impartial, because he's still involved in the discussion.
Yeah. I didn't want it to come back, because we didn't take him off at that point.
No, he still answered that in the affirmative.
Okay.
All right, so then if everyone's okay with that, with those small changes, I'll need a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I wasn't there.
But you still get to vote on it.
I was wondering about that, you know, does he abstain or what?
Yeah, still gets to vote on it.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have, consider appointment to planning board vacant seat for a three-year term expiring 3/1/2023. Barbie?
Yes, in your packet you have two applicants, and I'm passing out the third applicant. You saw his application, when he submitted his application for the vacant council seat. And when I spoke with him, he, he agreed to, to sign up for one of the vacant seats on the planning board and website committee.
And Bob, for your reference, I did not share the person's name at the time we were doing the thing, because I knew you would be somewhat familiar, since we just interviewed this person for a council position, so.
Correct.
So now that you have that information in front of you, I think, have we all had a chance to reach out to the individuals?
I have.
I have.
I'm sure we have one of them present right here today, if you have any questions. I'll open the floor to that, if you have any particular questions for us, since the applicant, one of the applicants is here. And if not, we can just discuss whatever you guys want to do, if you have points you want to make or on any of the candidates, and we'll go from there.
If I can, I'd like to throw in a nomination for Dr. Daniel. I, you know, spoke to everybody, but that's my nomination.
Okay, I'm missing my... Sorry. Go back. This is consensus? Yes, this is... This is consensus. This is.
We should be on the tab under.
Okay. Sorry. Messed up on my thing. Okay.
I love it. I'm just jumping right in.
Uh, for clarification, there's a nomination, but y'all historically done these by a motion. There's a little tweak in the process. Is this, were you making a motion to appoint Dr. Daniel as the, as the first, as the candidate?
As the candidate.
Okay. So now y'all can have a discussion. Okay.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay. That's okay.
That's what we do.
That's what we do.
Um, yeah, no, I mean, I, I was able to talk to, um, well, I guess I talked to all three applicants, just one was not for the planning board at the time. Um, and I was, um, appreciated all of them applying and, um, felt that they brought different, um, perspectives and different strengths to, um, the planning board and to the village. Um, I think both would do, or all three would do a great job. I keep saying both because that was originally what it was. Um, would do a great job and would be, um, the village would be lucky to have, um, any of them serving on a board. Um, so, uh, yeah.
I agree. I mean, I, I had a great conversation, um, with, with two. Um, and the other one, I, you know, interviewed for the other position and, and I think he did a great job. I, I can't, I can't, uh, disagree with you at all. I mean, all, all would be very, very capable and would serve, I think, any board that we would have and would be lucky to have on any board. So, um, yeah, that's, and it's a hard, and it's a hard decision to make. I mean, you're, you know, but as I said, even with the, even with the open council position, that, um, I, I would just ask and, and want and request that they all stay involved because it's an ever-changing environment and you just never know what comes up and, and what's going on. But.
Cause it takes the village.
It does.
George Bush.
The first.
Right?
Yep.
The first. Thousand points of light.
Yep.
Understood that part, but they do, it takes a village. And I really have no input on this. I'm like new on the scene here. So.
Okay.
I haven't spoken to any of them or any of that. So, yeah. I like Jamie. I, I did get a chance to talk to everyone, had a, a nice conversation with Melinda. Thank you for taking the time to chat with all of us about that. And then I spoke to Kent as well. Again, I agree that, uh, both would serve well. Uh, you know, I, I think just talking to you, knowing that your history and your family being on council, I think you mentioned to me in the past and stuff. So, uh, maybe it will groom you for a future council if possible. You never know. So, um, but, uh, but thank you for that and, and thank you for taking the time. And, uh, again, both candidates would, would, would serve very well. Um, we do have a motion on the, the table. Um, does anyone?
You have a nomination.
A nomination? Is there any other nominations? At this time?
I think you clarified and said.
It was, it was a motion.
I think you clarified instead of a motion.
It was a motion.
It was a motion. Okay.
Cause that's how y'all usually.
Yeah.
Right. So you had a motion to nominate.
No.
No, nominated or there's not a motion on the table.
Motion to appoint.
A motion to appoint. Okay.
You'll need to make, but there's a nomination on the table.
Well.
Just want to clarify. So, so we have a motion on the table. Further discussion?
Yeah.
I thought that it was a motion. Okay. No further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Bob? Nope. Can't hear you.
Aye.
And I will be abstaining for this one too. And, uh, with a unanimous vote, uh, welcome Melinda to the planning board. Doctor, um, how do you go by Melinda? I see.
One of us might.
All right. Okay.
Unless one of us is in trouble.
Well, we look forward to.
It'll be dark.
Well, we look forward to you to, uh, um, serving on the planning board and, uh, and giving your input. And I think John is still there. So John, we have a, a new, uh, player on your team there.
Glad to have a new, uh, member.
Yes, you do.
Yeah.
Congratulations. All right.
All right.
Terrific. Moving on, uh, we're gonna go.
We have, we have the other for the, are you, would you mind appointing this gentleman for the website committee?
Oh, that's right. We have a website committee, uh, appointing.
It's not on the agenda.
I asked for it to be added to the agenda along with the.
Did we add it to the agenda? I don't think we did at the beginning. I thought we were just doing planning board. And I, I don't mean to, to stir the pot here, but that's, I didn't realize that we were adding that.
Yeah. I thought you just said he also wanted to be considered for it, not that you wanted us to vote on it. That's.
And I thought he was just being considered for planning board.
No, he said he wanted to do the website committee.
We'll put it back on the agenda. That's fine.
Cause with that being said, I would like to speak with him about website. I mean, I, I'm all in favor of having somebody, but if he's, have you ever done anything with a website? No.
That's fair.
Well, but, but just the website committee, he's not, he's not building it. He's just, he's just, he's just resident input.
Okay. I get it. Just throw it out there.
I'll put it on.
If we're looking for a plumber committee, I want something. What end of the wrench do I hold?
Okay.
Fair enough. So if we can add that and then if we can all take his application and at least reach out to them. And then in the meantime, um, I distinctly remember, um, was it Angel saying that she, in her background?
Yes.
Had a communication and I don't know if she expressed interest, but we may want to reach out to her.
I have reached out to all of them and I have expressed, you know, what, what we had available and I haven't heard that.
Okay. I just remember from the interview, she was very good and, and she was proposing that she knew a lot about websites. So that, that would be helpful.
I, I did express that to her, but I have not heard.
Okay. That's fine. Um, so yeah, we'll just table that and put that on the next agenda. We'll have some time to talk to them individually. So, um, great. All right. Moving on, um, discussion of new business, um, G1, discussion of open public forum. Councilman.
Well, in light of, uh, um, our recent coffee with council.
Yep.
Um, I, I think it went great. Unfortunately, uh, we only had one person, um, show up. And, um, I was, I was hopeful that with all of the propaganda going out and all the people that were kind of had some, had questions and concerns that was going on, that there would be more. Um, but what was very, um, enlightening in that conversation, Tim, uh, I appreciate Tim coming in and, and, and meeting with us. But, uh, there was a lot of stuff that he brought to the table of questions, concerns that we addressed for him. And, um, that's just one. And we got an entire village. And I think in light of everything that we're doing, whether it's coffee with council, it is, um, sending out regular communication from, from staff. And in light of everything else that we have, I think, I do believe that there is room for us to have an open town hall, town forum, where off-site, um, throwing out ideas of maybe somewhere like Marvin Ridge High School in the auditorium, where we're, again, if we're going to talk about transparency and we're going to talk about doing who we are and what we have in front of us, doing it one person at a time is just, I think there's a great opportunity for us to have a town hall meeting where everyone can come in, schedule it on a, on a night sometime, maybe in September, where everyone's back from school, back from vacations, and where we can address all issues that are out there, all questions, concerns, rumors, um, all of that. And I think as a council, we, we, we put ourselves out there to be, to be transparent. And that's just my, I would, I would welcome that opportunity to have that discussion and have that forum for our constituents and for the people of Marvin because they're just in light of all the bad thing, I shouldn't say bad, all of the information that's out there that is just, and it's addressing rumors. And that would be my recommendation. Um, I would request that we have a, a open public forum so we can address all, and maybe that turns into something that's not just one time, but it's something, maybe it's a biannual event that we do as a village council. So not just this council, but moving forward, you don't have, we're going to eliminate the, the rumors and the scenarios and the propaganda and the falsehoods and all this other stuff. As long as we continue to do what we're doing, this just puts the nail, the, the final nail in all of it from a transparency standpoint. So.
I, I agree. At that meeting, uh, I was not surprised that only one showed up because that's typical. I've been trying to get people to come out and talk about it. But I think he was, he was more surprised. He was disappointed probably much more than that we were sitting here that he felt with everything that went on in next door neighbor, and then he's the only one that shows up. He had some great points. I appreciated him reaching out. And I think, uh, again, uh, you know, the, he's, he understands, you know, and to the fact, to the point where I think he was going to put out his own post and, but he wanted to fact check and he was reached out to our, our own staff and stuff. And that's what we encourage people to do. I mean, is to, to reach out to staff. But I agree with you. Um, getting that venue, getting the message out. And, um, I, I think it really nips the whole propaganda thing. And then, and it identifies as a resident, what you should be looking for when you're getting your information. Um, most importantly, and understanding the source. And it's like, okay, where's this coming from? But if we're willing to put ourselves out there once a year or twice a year and inhabit it, a venue like, we would have to do some arrangements with, you know, usually large crowds, COVID situation. I know we've talked about, you know, they, they want police there because it is a, um, a school facility and stuff like that. It becomes a little bit of a logistic issue, but it can happen.
But scheduled far enough in advance. That's why I wanted to bring it up now. Schedule far enough in advance. You can have submit, you know, submit questions. I mean, they do it all the time. Uh, Jim from, uh, Innisbrook would want to know, he wants to know this. Okay. Let's, let's address it. And, but at the end of the day, it is a way for everyone to be able to get, we're a village.
And, and I would say at that same meeting too, we have at least one or two staff members that can speak on behalf of the, we'll call it the nonpartisan group because you want to be able to say, hey, is that really what's, what's happening there? And they can, you know, attest to what we're doing or what, what has happened as far as behind the scenes and, and things that a lot of people don't know. I think it's a great idea. I think, um, even Tim appreciated something like that, that, uh, him going forward, how he, how he gets his information, if that goes. So.
I think it's a great idea. Um, I think we should go ahead and schedule it and start planning it. Do you want it to be, will people have to submit questions beforehand? Or do you want it to be submit questions beforehand and stand up and ask questions? Cause I'm fine either way.
If I could chime in, I would like the idea of.
No.
Well, I, I would want questions ahead of time. So we know we have at least an interest and that there's, whether 10 people show up or 500 people show up, we've got at least 10 questions and a podium and, and stuff. It's like, look, these are, and, and put it out there and said, look, we are, you know, I, again, we're, we're doing this because we're there to serve. We want to hear what they're hearing and where they're getting their information. We want to make sure that they're getting the right information. So, so, so we're all on the same page. And, you know, maybe, maybe it's an opportunity if you do get a big crowd to, uh, you know, not that you learn much from it, but take some idea polling and stuff on certain things, if, if issues, you know, come up and stuff. Even though we did a survey that I think, um, I mean, he pointed out that we're, we're focusing on this survey. Well, it's, we can only go by with the information that people took the time to get to us. But.
All right.
It hasn't changed much.
So let's start playing, I mean, let's start.
To your question, I think that we should allow people to elaborate on questions there though, because a lot of times questions answered become more questions.
Sure.
You know, and that.
Yeah.
You gotta have that forum for. Yeah. And this is a great vehicle for the village to discuss everything openly where, where there's, yeah, I, I think it's an awesome idea. That's 100%.
Bob, you're good with that?
I'm good with that. I, I like, um, the fact that it is just, oh, I, I just believe in open communication. And, um, you know, living here all the years that I had, you know, I never knew personally as a citizen, what was going on. I, I had, you know, we don't have a newspaper like we discussed. We don't have, we used to have a newsletter of some sort that, that came out, but I believe in, in town halls. They've done all this a lot. And, uh, I, I think it would be refreshing.
Okay. So now we're down to scheduling.
We'll work on some ideas, um, put it on the work session if y'all.
Ideas and some dates. Yep.
Okay. And then we assuming the venue will be at?
A high school.
I don't.
What I didn't ask.
You gotta ask first.
Yeah. Well, I know, but I understand that. What I was going to say was, let's go ahead and reach out to the high school now and see if we can schedule something.
See if we can even do that. Town would like to have like a town council forum.
I mean, I can't imagine that they wouldn't let us have it. We had that thing for the election whenever we were running.
They did hold something at the high school when we had our, um, it was a questionnaire. They asked each of the candidates and we sat up there and they had it, held it at the library and maybe.
So I'm sure.
12 people showed up. So.
No, that's.
Well, if you have an auditorium, they have, they have a P A system. So.
Yeah. We'll bring some stuff back. We'll do some research.
Okay.
Well, just odd. What about having it at the barn over at Eifert Park? Just asking.
I mean, I guess it really.
Could be hot. It could rain.
The, the, the venue should fit the reaction from the village. I mean, if we're going to have five people, we don't need to have in high school. We're gonna have 500 people, then yes.
But we don't know.
Well, and I think that, that maybe, you know, while we're trying to plan this, we get some feedback from the village before we pick a venue. But at that same time, it's difficult to pick a venue without far enough notice out. So.
See if they'll allow it. And, and maybe, you know, we're talking probably, I'm guessing the fall, um, if that would make sense. Once people are back in school and kids are, you know, everyone's got their sort of new normal down.
I know they're closed right now, but I could reach out to them by an email.
Right. And I'm thinking evening when, when it works. And then at that point, you get the feel of, are they gonna like that or not? But that could be a potential as far as a venue at the, where you have a town hall at the, at Eifert.
If I have a town hall and I know I've got a comfortable place to sit, I don't care if I'm running late, I'm in a comfortable seat and I got a P A system and it, I'm just, that's why I throw out more.
Oh, I.
It'd be easier in a high school.
I would learn nothing more than having, you know, because of people get to see you for Park.
Right.
Cause there's still people leaving Marvin that don't know about you for Park.
Right.
But I think for this, we need, we need to get to brass tacks. We need to get down to answering the questions and, and not concerned with weather, not concerned with anything else. It's just, let's.
Well, we always have firethorn reviews for other venues and stuff like that that, that, you know.
I mean, the high school is much better.
I think, I think it's better too. But, you know, I mean, the high school ain't saying no.
We'll see what we can come up with and, um, report back to you at the work session.
All right.
But I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. We'll move forward on that.
You're welcome.
Next up, we are, um, this, uh, number two, new business discussion of planning board member removal. Jamie, you got this one?
Um, in light of, again, coffee with council, um, and in light of, uh, a significant amount of propaganda that's gone out, under the guise of the Marvin Town logo, um, and everyone that, you know, we all get information. But when we get this information, it's, we, we have to handle it in a responsible way. And whether you're on council, that includes me. If you're on council, if you're on PRG, if you're on planning board, if you're taking if you're on planning board, if you're taking that information away and you're using it as propaganda, if you're manipulating it and you're using it against the goal of the village, that can't be stood for. It is just my belief, if you're on one of these boards, or if you're on the council, or whoever, whatever role you play in support of the village, if you're given information and you can't handle it appropriately and you're using it against the village, I would ask council to, how do we address that, knowing where that information's coming from? Because that, we have to hold, I'm held accountable, I'm sure everyone in here is held accountable, and everyone on these other boards. But what I, the most important thing is, when someone takes information, uses it as propaganda, what you have to understand is, everyone on P R G, council, and on the planning board, every one of those individuals are having to defend it, having to discuss it. We're supposed to be working together, we can have our discussions. I'm all for free speech, but using it against what we're all trying to work towards is unacceptable, and it has, and that person, person or persons have to be held accountable and held in account for what they do and their actions. And so I would ask council to advise us on how we address that.
Yes, and I think right now you're making it clear that you don't want people manipulating the data and going against the interests of the village. For one of you elected, appointed, but still in the same position as a village council member, the process would be similar as we did last time, more formal, longer, drawn out, and that's the emotion process. For the appointed boards, I still believe you ought to give notice and an opportunity to be heard. There, you could probably skip some of that, but let people know and let them come before and tell them, I don't think you have to have the long drawn out process by any means that you do, but if you've got somebody on one of your appointed boards, if you have the power of appointment, you have the power of removal on a quicker and more expedited basis, I think you could throw it on the next agenda, let people know what's going on to that specific person, and you've got notice, and if you want to come speak, you have an opportunity to be heard, and then we intend to take action, and the action could be, is council seats fit from removal to some type of warning? I imagine if you're bringing it up before council, though, it's going to be beyond a verbal warning. I think you're giving the verbal warning now, but I think you can move forward. So that would be the process, longer drawn out emotion process if it's a council member. And then on your appointed boards, I would give them notice, tell them of the meeting, you know, set forth, in summary, the reasons, and then let them respond.
Even though they serve at the pleasure.
Right.
You're just offering the heads up and sort of a classier way to do it than what has been done in the past.
I think it's a classier way to do it, also think if you speak with somebody, said, I'm going to move to have this on the agenda. This is me personally, I'm going to have it on the agenda. You can say, if you spoke with the others, said that they're irritated as well, somebody might resign. You'd also give them the opportunity to do that by going through, I guess, a more formal process. It's not that much longer, because you'd still have to take action at a board meeting. It's just giving somebody a little bit of notice of it. And if they want to proceed, you put it on the agenda. But it's the same process, it's just giving them a little bit of notice.
My comment would be, and I agree with you, by the way, my comment would be though, with that, we are, I do believe that's the appropriate way to do it. However, the individuals that supposedly has done this certainly didn't stand up in front of us and said, this is what I'm going to do. So we're taking it upon ourselves to follow the right process. The person who actually sent it out as propaganda didn't have, I guess, the integrity to say, hey, are you opposed to me sending this out? I'm all for it, I think we've identified what the process is, and we can go with it. It's just not for this, it's not for just us, and I keep going back to this, but in the future, we can't just have rogue individuals who's just going, you know what, I'm going to run the village the way I want to run it, and I'm going to put the burden back on every one of you, whether you're on P R G, you're on planning board, or you're on council. I'm going to make it, I'm just going to make your life miserable. And if you don't put a lime in the sand and say, no, it's not going to happen, but, so you can hold people accountable, and then on top of that, add it to all of the other things that I believe we're doing, and we're doing with transparency, and we're doing correctly, it is hopeful that a lot of this will diminish and go away. We can, we can take care of, you know, we can all disagree. We can all have discussion, we can all, you know, whatever, but let's do it with integrity, let's do it with morals, let's do it with professionalism, and then move forward. But accountability has to be, I'm held accountable, and each one of us is held accountable.
You make a good point, and that's why I brought the letter before we sent it out. I brought it before council, because I wanted consensus, because there's a little more meat to it when it has consensus. It's not just, essentially, because they could accuse me of being a propagandist by the letter I sent. However, we discussed it in the meeting before and saying, hey, here's what, how I think we should address this issue. And I can tell you, and I will tell you, that as the mayor, you know, you're sort of the spokesman for the town, but, and I know a lot of mayors, they don't go get approval before they go and talk on the town. And I always remind people, when I'm speaking, my opinion, it's the opinion of one, but we all move forward as a group, and that's how it should be in all our, whether it's on a board position you're appointed to, or whether we're doing it here. And that's why I feel so unfortunate that I, I'm going to kick it off of you, I'm going to kick it off of you and reach out to you and talk to Bob about what, if I'm going to say something, it's going to be, but if it comes in the form of a letter, I want its consensus. I mean, you know, we've got to move forward as a group, and once we start, to your point, going off rogue and stuff, then it defeats our purpose of what we're trying to get accomplished, and all it does is stall the process, and it's not helpful by any means, so. That being said, I think there's, and I like your suggestion...
I concur with you, P R G, that's, imagine the rules say they serve at your pleasure.
They both do.
Yes.
Any board.
And I'm not disputing that, the way it was done in the past. I like the way, if it's thus to be on an agenda item with the board voting, I just think it's better to give notice and opportunity, plus it may not even get there.
So who gives the notice? Should we ask direct staff, or Christina too?
It would be just like an agenda item, you'd follow the agenda procedures.
Okay, so we put it on the agenda, but then, before we put it on the agenda that goes out, do we have staff contact if there's an individual?
Yeah, I'd contact them and say...
So it's not the same as the emotion where you do up the...
No, 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 no.
I'd try to give them, yeah, because that one we did 30 days notice, I'd try to give them as much as possible, and during that time, it may be able to get resolved. I mean, somebody may say, if you're that disappointed with me, I've seen this done in other areas with this procedure, and other people have gone, well, if that's the way you and several board members feel, don't even go through with it, I'll resign.
Right.
Gives that opportunity.
But, so when it goes on the, when it goes on the agenda, do you then put that person's name on the agenda? Is it done like that? Or is it done just...
I think you have to, for most transparency.
That's transparency. If not, in a minimum view, I would have a writing confirmation from the village as to which person, it could say, notice of removal of planning board member. That I would have, at a minimum, I would have the, somebody from the town notify that person in writing just to confirm.
It could be a memo from the council requesting that. They could draft a memo for, and direct staff to forward the memo to the individual that they are, they are looking into that particular action.
I completely appreciate where, you know, we're coming from. I certainly don't want to take this down the road of anywhere near an emotion. It's just, you know, I mean, and quite frankly, I think people walking into the roles of planning board member, P R G, whatever board you're on, you know, you take on basically a responsibility to, and understand certain things, and, you know, and... You know, and I don't know if there's rules for each different department.
Well, they sign the Code of Ethics.
The Code of Ethics. Perfect example of stuff. So that's where it becomes a lot quicker process. And I got used to that with former council, so I appreciate what we're doing here, and we're actually giving someone, if we're going to move forward with it, we're giving them the opportunity to say, you know what, if I'm not wanted here, let's not go through it and drag my name through the mud, or whatever.
Right, I think it gives them that opportunity, because otherwise, you're still, like I said, you've got to take action as a board, and then you're bringing it up publicly at a meeting in the minutes. And it also gives somebody heads up, but it is not the emotion process.
They certainly did give us a heads up.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I mean, that's, that, just so you know, that's how it was done in the past, if you were unhappy, and all of a sudden, like, you get, everybody gets, you know, blindsided by some things.
I don't want to be a part of the problem, I want to be a part of the solution, and I think what, the way we're going about it is part of the solution. So that's, I appreciate council clarifying that and putting us in position and going from there.
So going forward, then, we would put this on the work session to talk about, to be on the next? Because this would be on a meeting we would take a vote on if it had to go to a vote, and which wouldn't be at a work session, correct?
Well, legally, you can vote at work sessions, depending on how you'd notice it, because they are meetings, but y'all generally, in your rules, unless you do other things, have said that the work sessions are informational. But with your agenda packets in your rules there, I think one council member can have an agenda item.
Yes.
So... I thought it had to be two.
No, one.
So you wouldn't have to bring it up. If I'm a council member, I probably want to discuss it with at least one other, make sure of that.
Right, so logistically, yeah, you never want to bring a vote up if it's, you know, but logistically, so we're thinking, council member X brings it to their attention, wants to put it on the agenda, has a person's name involved, that gives them basically, and we don't have rules and procedures on it, but it gives them the go ahead to say, hey, by the way, you're going to be on the agenda for a potential removal, because you don't know until the vote takes place. They've agreed to put it on the agenda, or it's being put on the agenda by a council member, and then you just give them the opportunity, and hopefully, before it gets to that week, before we get the packet, they either make a decision, I'm going to show up for this, or they don't show up.
Or they don't show up.
Or they just say, you know, offer my permission.
Take my name out of the pot, and I resign.
Right, yeah.
It, I would try to get that as early as you can, to give more opportunity for that.
Okay, so as we leave here, we don't have to discuss this anymore, just for council. So if there is that going forward, we...
Start it as early as you can. If you know it's going to be at the next meeting, you know, go ahead and get that in there.
Very good. We all clear on that? Bob?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
All right, we're good?
Yep.
Everything's okay?
Yep.
All right. All right, moving on, we're going to go on to a discussion of temporary solution to the third roundabout.
So...
Thank you.
Thank you. I passed out an email that has been sent around from me and Sean Epperson with D O T. Long story short, in response to the news that we got a couple weeks ago about the roundabout being delayed another year, reached out to them and just asked if there was anything we could do in the interim to help traffic mitigation. We had since, well, we had looked at a right in, right out several months ago. Cancel was not, from my understanding, cancel was not interested in that at that point, or there was maybe not a feasibility from D O T's standpoint. They have since come back and said, it might be an option, but it's going to be at our cost and our maintenance. So if cancel is willing to put up funding for bollards and curbing that's needed, and to maintain those bollards, we would do a right in, right out at that intersection where the roundabout's going.
So coming down from Marvin, to be clear, to Newtown, you have a right only turn.
That's correct.
So you're going to have to figure out another way.
That's correct.
Which is going to, just so you know, because I think we played with this a little bit, it created issues at Joe Carr, and all the turning there, because that's where they're going to tour, and that's going to direct all that traffic that way, and then it's going to come through Marvin School Road. That's already backed up as it is, I can tell you.
So the initial assessment from D O T was that we were going to solve a problem in one intersection and create two more problems. So that's kind of why they said, no, it's not really an option. However, in their assessment here recently, with the limited driving that's been taking place with the COVID issues, they said it may be a viable option, but again, it's going to be at our cost. He did let us know that it was going to be around less than $10,000, and he said that the bollards would have to be replaced every so often, because they do get hit a lot, they'll get dirty, they'll get damaged. That is not something that we have...
Or they'll fall in the lake over there.
Well, they'll be, they'll be actually put in, they're not like moving ones.
But it'd be clearly directing them way before they get to Joe Carr, obviously. Right turn only at, there'll be some sort of signage that has to be out for them, for anyone going that way, because here's the other issue.
It's still not a viable option. We looked at it, thanks number months ago, but it's still not.
Pitchfork, if you may, and go right on.
And then people figure out, and then all of a sudden, they're coming through different neighborhoods.
They're going through Firethorn out the back, and, yeah, it's just not a viable option.
Thing, and it...
What about an always stop? Is that not an option? A freeway stop?
No, they said it was back way.
Ever. It's, right now, again, as long as we can get the officers at a reasonable price and they don't raise the price on us, the other option is go to a construction company and have them there on a regular basis. We should still, I think, consider that, because that is, in my view, under construction, it's to be done, and they are doing, as far as I know, they're, they have engineers out there looking at how they're designing that, and you put a construction firm out there every day, and you pay them X amount of dollars to hold signs that say slow and stop, it may be a lot less expensive than what we're paying an officer for. Just a thought.
There's a bunch of traffic safety companies now that I've noticed, most of the big construction companies are contracting it out to traffic safety.
Instead of hiring the, yeah.
That direct traffic and do all the signage and everything with it, you know, just as a company. So I guess they would be just like any other contractor, contract on direct traffic for you.
Because again, right now, real quick, Christina confirmed for me, or refreshed my memory, we need two officers, a minimum of three hours, that's six hours a day, assuming it's going to be every weekday, and we pay what?
I'd have to look at the budget, it was $30,000-ish.
Well, I'm just saying, per hour, they get...
I have no clue, it's 20, 20...
I think it's like $30 an hour.
I just know the annual cost. We can look into the traffic...
Times two is 60 bucks an hour times.
We can look into the traffic control, safety, that's definitely an option. My question now is, do you guys want to entertain the right in, right out?
I don't.
At our cost. Okay, that's all I need now, and I'll look into that further and get more information back at work session.
Thank you for looking into that, though.
Can we take a five minute?
Quick five minute recess?
Please.
All right.
Let's make sure to take a five minute recess.
All right.